Good morning. Welcome to the second
The entire budget is proposed at nine million seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And this is a twelve percent increase over fiscal year twenty-five. That dollar figure for that increase is nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. You'll see a little bit further down in the chart Personnel Services account for the largest percentage of this. And that increase is eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Operating expenses for this budget are very small. Whenever you look across the multiple divisions within the entire Police Department, the entire operating expense for the entire department is only going up four thousand dollars. And I also should state that this does also include dispatch. And then you'll see capital outlay, you'll see a hundred and six thousand fifty-five dollars across those. And I'll let the chief, once he gets into some of his divisions, discuss what those capital improvements are and what those proposed costs are. If you also look down, you know, with the graph illustration at the bottom of page forty-five, it outlines the cost allocation for this department. You'll see Police Operations account for fifty-seven percent of the budget. Investigations is eighteen percent. Police Administration is twelve percent. Dispatch is ten percent. And Code Enforcement is three percent. So that is the allocation currently presented in this year's budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Acosta to give you guys information as we go through Police Administration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will pick up where Mr. Benton left off. And if we can start on page forty-nine. With the Police Administration budget. Which includes my executive assistant, the Records Department, and our part-time quartermaster. The four thousand dollars operating expenses that Mr. Benton was talking about, half of that, over half of that, twenty-seven hundred dollars of it is the, due to the accreditation being due this year and the associated costs with that, we have to house the assessors and pay the fees for that. And that's a big part of the four thousand dollar increase in the operating expenses. Go to page fifty. I can go through some of the budget line items that have increases or decreases, I just want to point out. And starting with, you know, operating expenditures, professional services. It's going up from six hundred and fifty dollars to four thousand eight hundred and fifty. And that's for, like I said, the accreditation services. And R and M of buildings is going from twenty-five hundred down to fifteen hundred. The R and M of office equipment went from twenty-three thousand down to thirteen thousand. And the reason for that is some of those items were moved to other budgets that, where they actually fit in. So we just wanted to place them properly for future use. Some of the other stuff that, I guess we can call victims of our cuts. Departmental supplies went from seven thousand down to just a little over six thousand. The small tools and equipment went from sixteen hundred down to a thousand. And in Training and Education, it went from six thousand up to eight thousand. And part of that is we included PIO training for the Communications and Social Media Manager. So that's in our budget to send her to that. So that was part of that increase. That's the, any changes, I mean, I almost said major changes, but there's not too many major changes. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's the end of the Administration budget. If you, anybody has any questions.
Did you just reclassify the captain's position to the lieutenant's position?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, no, yes, sir. Sorry, you're correct.
All right.
And that would have happened in last year's budget.
Yeah.
When Deputy Chief Witt left and the reorganization at that time, we reclassified that.
Okay.
So if there's no other questions in Admin, we can move on to Patrol. And I'll, if I can guide you to page fifty-three, I'll start there with, I know this was a big conversation last year in this, you know, the number of officers that are in Patrol and how many we have in Training and how many openings we have. Just going to point out that right now, we have twenty-five active officers in, out of the thirty-one, there's twenty-five active officers in Patrol. Three of those are waiting, waiting transfer to the, we have a detective retiring in two weeks. And we have two vacant detective spots that we've been, they've been open for the whole year. And the detectives are really working hard, like, you know, we're full now because we have five officers in Training and one recruit in the academy. But the Detective Bureau has really been working hard this last year. And we're really trying to get some officers transferred over there.
So, so just to clarify that a little bit. We have three current vacant positions in the Police Department. Those three vacant positions are going to be officers because we are going to be moving three officers into the detective positions. So just want to clarify that. They're currently not shown here as openings because they're in Investigations. You'll see them there, but they're realistically going to be, we're down three officers at the current time, which is a great improvement from last year and even two years prior. We, our numbers are getting up there to being full staff. I also want to draw your attention, we had the discussion last year, lengthy discussion in regards to this. Two years ago, in FY twenty-four's budget, we had added two officers to bring us to thirty-one. However, that didn't evenly complete the split across all the shifts. So last year, we did not propose any additions. However, in our Budget Workshop, the discussion with Council was to allocate or to budget those positions or not budget those positions, but have them available to get that number up to thirty-three so that it be evenly across all the shifts. We obviously, as you can see, we have filled all of our positions. Now we just have three openings. That does not include those two positions. So what we're once again proposing this year is that we're still at the thirty-one. However, we, those two additional officers are not shown in this budget to get us to thirty-three. So if we have, if we make that decision later in the fiscal year, we'll come back to you all and have that discussion at a council meeting that we're looking for additional funding for those two positions. So I just want to clarify that.
How much of the overtime budget is because you have those two unfilled positions? Because your overtime budget proposed is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, two forty last year.
So if you look back at-
Three hundred last year.
Yeah, if you look back at fiscal year twenty-three, we're at four hundred and one, fiscal year twenty-four, four hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah.
So you can see the trend as that's coming down. However, what we're accounting for is pretty much the typical same number of overtime, but pay increases are going to affect that budget. So that's how we account for that increase from two forty last year and the requested budget to two seventy-five this year.
Okay.
Is pay increases are now going to cost us more on those overtime details.
Well, I'm not, I'm asking about hours, okay? You've got, if I understand our discussion last year, the chart to be able to do, to fully man three shifts was thirty-three officers, but we only had thirty-one. And the decision was made that you need thirty-three to man those three shifts. But since we only have thirty-one and there was not stomach at the cost of two officers, we chose not to keep that FTE count, but not to actually staff those full, those thirty-three FTEs.
Right.
But we're generating relatively large dollars in overtime. And the question is, is that overtime because those two officers aren't there and you're paying the, some of the thirty-one officers, greater amount of overtime to cover shifts?
So, yes and no. So it's, it's way more than the two officers? It's because, you know, we're not utilizing the five that are in the, you know, last year they were in the academy and now they're on Training. They weren't being paid and they also don't, you know, normally make overtime. We still have additional openings and those aren't filled and those aren't, you know, so it's more than just the two openings that are creating that.
Those are the detective openings, right? There's three detective openings and you're going to fill those by transferring off-
Correct.
Patrol officers and promoting them basically.
Correct.
The detective. And then you'll have to, you are backfilling those with new officers that you're currently having in the pipeline.
Correct.
Right.
But then ultimately it gets paid from unencumbered salaries. You know, the money gets moved from unencumbered salaries to cover that overtime.
Okay.
So, I think what Mr. Benton was saying is next year, we won't have that need. And therefore that's why it's less this year or for this coming budget.
Okay.
And that's why it's going down.
Okay, so then let's get into the overtime. What's the overtime being used for? If it's not going to be used to cover officers that we're short, what is it going to be used for?
Well, before you explain what it is, we are still going to be three officers short. We don't have officers, currently what we show, if you go back to page fifty-three.
Yeah.
We have thirty-one, okay, shown there. Three are going away, so we really only have twenty-eight in that number. However-
We're preparing for overtime to cover those three.
You're still going to have three openings that are either going to have to go through the academy, which is more than likely. And so that takes, as you know, six months through the academy, additional six months training. It's a full year before they're ever active officers.
Okay.
So, and that's on a best case scenario. So we're still having three vacancies that we have to cover with overtime at times, not all the time, but at times. And then also we have all of our special events that have to be covered with overtime. Additional detail whenever they're doing operations and things of that nature where we have to pull in additional officers.
Okay, so let's talk details. I'm not talking city details because city details don't get paid to us. But outside details are, does that include outside details?
This does not, no, that's covered by the vendor.
Does not include outside details?
No, but the overtime includes if an officer makes an arrest, if an officer has court on their day off. At nighttime, you know, any night shift officer, if they get caught, that's overtime.
Okay.
It adds up, racks up.
And also what I like, every special event, we're having overtime, we're covering, the city's covering the overtime for all of those officers at every special event.
Obviously, they're, they've already worked their shifts, so they need, okay. I think it's important, I think, to understand that. So when people hear details, because here's my thought when I first hear, well, they're working a detail. Well, somebody should be paying us for that detail. So that should be covering the cost of whatever that officer costs, hopefully.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure people understand these details are things that are required due to duty and city-related items. It's not outside stuff. It's, it's stuff to cover short positions, things to cover, obviously. If an officer makes an arrest at six forty-five and their shift ends at seven, they're going to work for another two and a half, three hours to finish that up.
More than that, probably.
Well, probably more than that. If they have taken to jail, it's probably a lot more than that.
They don't have as much paperwork as you did for it.
I don't know about all that. But I hear, I say thirty-one, but there's also thirty-three for twenty-four, twenty-five. We're saying that we currently have thirty-one for the officers.
Yeah, if you look at the, we've got it starred down there. We were providing for thirty-three positions, but only funding thirty-one FTEs. That was your request last year was to take it of that approach. We're continuing to do the same thing this year because, you know, we've still got, we've got three openings. And then so then once we fill those three, then we'll technically be full with thirty-one. But then those two additional ones, if we're able to fill those, and we talked last year about trying to fill them with more experienced officers and trying to not have so many brand-new, because our average age of officers is, you know, coming down with every time we hire new officers. So, you know, looking at that, and then we would come back to the, to the Council at that time and say, we have these opportunities, we had it discussed, we're going to have to allocate funding towards it at that time.
Let me, the three vacancies you currently have are in detectives. Is that correct?
Correct, but technically when you look at the, when you look at the positions, they're really officer vacancies.
Well, okay, but they're officer vacancies because you're going to promote officers to detectives.
Yes, sir.
But the three vacancies, if you hire a detective tomorrow, you've done away with one of those without promoting an officer.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Without promoting an officer to detective, if somebody walks through the door and they've got twelve years of experiences of detective someplace and you say, yeah, I'm going to hire this guy, you only, you filled a detective vacancy, not an officer vacancy. Correct. And so I know you're going to do different.
That's not practice.
How many, how many people are in our current pipeline that we are paying to go to school or we are?
One. We have one in the academy that graduates in September.
Yeah, if you look, we include that on the chart on that bottom left-hand corner right there, right where your thumb is.
Ah, okay, so it's a footnote down there or something.
So minus, minus the three that are going to retire, then we technically have thirty officers on the street right now, counting the detectives and everything. Technically, right now.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Well, we have one in-
Running detectives, because that's a different budget.
So that one in school doesn't count for being on the road right now.
Correct.
So we have thirty on the road, right, technically on the road right now.
Correct, and five of them are in Training, so they're in a car with somebody else.
They're FTO right now, but they are technically on the road right now. So we only have one technically not filled position right this minute until these other three retire and we have to move officers around.
Well, no, there's vacancies. There's one that's retiring in two weeks.
Oh, that's not a vacancy yet. I'm not being technical, but that's technically not a vacancy yet until they retire. And I know that's happening in two weeks, so don't, don't push me there. But right this second, we have thirty road officers on the road and detectives right this minute before positions start opening up.
Detectives are a different division here, though. You get to them.
We do have thirty bodies.
Okay.
Twenty-five active officers and five in Training.
Okay, okay. That's, that's good, okay.
But we do have two vacancies, like there's two detective empty offices that have been empty with detectives working extra, covering that.
And these financial projections-
Because Road Patrol, you know, has to be covered.
Okay, the salary projections, are they, are they including the increase from a training officer to a certified, to a certified active officer? Or is that two million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars include the dollars only that you're, because you pay them a lot less while they're in Training.
Correct, but it comes out of, it's unencumbered salary is where it ultimately comes from, so it's a partial of the salary they're going to make.
Yeah, but I mean, just-
That does include it, yes, sir.
This salary account, though, assumes that those officers are already fully operational and paying at full salary.
In the, in the projections, the Finance Department would have included the current ones that are sworn in, which are the FTOs, the five. The one that's in Training would continue to show their training salary until they're to be sworn in. So it would not show that, it wouldn't show anything other than what they're actually doing and projecting through the end of October, end of September thirtieth.
All right, I'm just getting it, is there an opportunity during the, because we're projecting for the next fifteen months in advance, basically. So I'm just saying, is there an opportunity, this is going to go up because those officers spin out of training into full active officers?
So I can state what's in the department request, which is two million seven sixty-two. That number factors in thirty-one positions being full the entire year.
Got it. That's all, that's all I was wanting to make sure of, okay.
You know, what's the percentage less of when they actually go on the road, when they actually finish from what they're getting paid now? The difference between, is it ten percent, half of what they normally would get while they're in Training?
Well, while they're in Training, they get full pay. It's when they're in the academy that they get the fifteen dollars. When they get sworn in, they get, go to the starting officer pay.
So while they're in Academy, our current rate is fifteen dollars an hour, while they're in Academy. Once they are sworn in at the Police Department, start work even as in, even in Training, they're getting that starting salary.
The beginning starting salary.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so there's no percentage less of that.
At that time, a sworn officer.
All right, okay.
I know this is not the year to do it, but in reality, I still have the, my personal opinion is if we have a need for thirty-three officers, we need to have thirty-three officers.
So I agree, but if I could just say one thing real quick. I don't normally talk for other people or speak for other people, but I agree with you. They are needed and we can use them. But I think if you were to ask all the officers over-
But I think if you were to ask all the officers over there, they would rather work short and, and get the adjustment in pay that they're going for. Know the adjustment in pay that they're shooting for in the union, union negotiations, which came into, uh, the consideration for city manager and I when we. Decided, should we put in for these or should we, you know, try to allocate some of that money, so.
The argument there is public safety, in my opinion, okay, if, if it, if you need thirty-three officers to staff three shifts correctly. And you only have thirty-one, what potential impact is that on the public safety? And I, I understand your discussion, I, if I worked over there, I would say, give me a bigger raise and less officers, I'd be happy. You know, but there's a responsibility beyond that that we need to deal with, so I don't, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think our approach, the way we took it last year. Is very adequate to take that same approach this year. We're not telling them they don't have thirty-three officers. What we're telling them is, the budget document doesn't fund those two. But council is more than willing, if we're able to fill those with some officers that come in, if we have a veteran officer that comes in and says, I want to join the Sebastian Police Department. I'll come to you all and say, hey, I need to allocate reserves to fund this position now. I just think that if, otherwise, they're gonna have to go through the academy, you're never gonna see that, that officer salary in next year's budget at all. Cause it will take them over a year to go through the academy, to go through, the whole process, the application process in the academy is gonna take them a full year.
Okay, so what you just said to me was, you just advocated for putting the money in the budget for those two officers now, because. In order to get them trained, get them ready to go, it's gonna be a year before we're paying full salary anyways. If we wait another year, six months, now we're still another year down the road. And, and I'm gonna tell you, my, I, I support our police department one hundred percent. But my job here is not to make sure they have enough open positions to get overtime, and I know that's a huge benefit. From that side of the, of the road over there, and I know it is, but our job is not. To stock, to house our positions, to have the number of employees so that can happen, our job is to make sure we're covered, to cover every position on the road if possible. And if we need thirty-three, I don't know why we're not funding for thirty-three.
If, if, if we assume that they're gonna bring officers in through the pipeline, you know, through the, through the, in River State College, wherever and so forth, and it takes nine months to twelve months to get through that process. We're talking about fifteen dollars an hour versus the full salary that we would be paying, so if we were to, if, if we were to fund. The beginning process of funding two additional positions through that pipeline. We're not talking about fifteen dollars an hour starting October first, we're probably talking about fifteen dollars an hour starting for one person in November, December, for another one in January, February, so is there some partial year funding? That we can do in anticipation of that, I, and I, I'm not opposed to saying your FTE count's thirty-three, we're only gonna fund thirty-one right now. I'm not opposed to doing that, cause we have real big budget considerations.
I'd answer your question, if somebody comes from the sheriff's office or Palm Bay Police Department tomorrow and they're qualified and they wanna start. We wouldn't put them in detectives, but they would've started as an officer and we would, that money would be necessary immediately.
But would you do that to backfill the three officers that you're gonna promote to detective?
Those, those positions are already basically accounted for from our current staffing, come August, people are slotting over to investigations.
Your three detective vacancies will get filled most likely from your patrol division?
They are, that's already pretty much, that's already been done.
One hundred percent.
So you, all right, so you already have, you already have the additional patrol officers in order to transfer the, three of those into the detective division, basically.
I'm confused on that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, you've confused the heck out of me on that, so. If you've got five detective positions. Is that how many we have right now, five detectives and technically three of them are, are gonna be retiring, so they're gonna be, or some are, two are already.
One is retiring.
One is retired and then two are open? So how, how are they full positions if they're empty, I don't understand.
No, no, so, so let me clarify, so those positions are currently vacant, we have two positions. In the entire police department, we currently have two positions vacant.
Okay.
Those two positions are in investigations.
Okay.
Which is shown on page fifty-seven, investigations is on fifty-seven. So out of those two positions, that means we currently have three investigators out of the five, there's two openings. One additional one is retiring at the end of this month. That now will take investigators budgeted five, but we only have two. So at the end of this month, we'll now have three total openings in the entire police department.
Okay.
All three of those will be detectives in the investigative division.
Right.
They have already done interviews and made selections.
Okay.
For those three, those three detectives.
Fair.
So three detectives now, or three officers are going from the operations budget to the detective budget.
So how are we then not gonna be short three officers?
We are gonna be short three officers, so then, so then that's what I'm saying, then at that point, we now have three officer openings.
Okay.
Currently you have two detectives.
Wasn't getting that before.
We will have three officer openings, so at, at that point, remember that, and, and I wanna, I wanna try to round this off here. Three officer openings effective, I'm just gonna use August first as a date. I don't know what the applications are looking like, but I can tell you, the moment applications come in. It's still another four to six months before, even if they're approved before they go to the academy.
Right.
So now you're already six months into next fiscal year with those three positions. They then are going to school for six months. The only way we have to fund, the only way we really see budget numbers hit those three positions next year. Is if they are veteran officers coming from another local, another agency. Then if that happens, great, because we, we want those veteran officers.
Are we recruiting for that?
But.
For the veteran officers?
I don't wanna, I, yes.
I'm not saying we're going to talk to officers and say, do you want a job, but advertising that we're looking for experienced officers is.
One hundred percent, we're going for, we want experienced officers.
Okay.
So I just wanna clarify that, that I, I still think even with those two additional ones that would get us to thirty-three, that would be five openings.
Right.
I still don't think you're gonna see those dollars hit for those two additional officers in next fiscal year. Unless we somehow get five veteran officers, which would be a great problem.
So, so.
And I'm just gonna be honest.
Even a background for a veteran officer takes, they go from three to six months.
That would be a great problem to have.
So, so in other words, to sum up the two positions, it's not that we're, we're not budging for it, cause we don't see the expense for it. But we are still looking at the possibility of filling those two positions, and if we do, then we will have to address the budget.
And I can tell you before the issue happened with the detectives. The chief and I had a discussion, cause he said, Brian, we're getting close to being at full capacity. Am I gonna be able to fill those two new ones, I said, absolutely, we'll go back to council and get it funded.
Okay.
So it's known, we know it, I just don't wanna throw those numbers in here to now throw this further off.
Fair.
We budget, we show thirty-three, we just don't budget for thirty-three.
Fair.
Knowing the entire process and how it plays out.
I'm, I'm good with that, because that, that. Still has the idea that we will have thirty-three at some point, once we're able to achieve that.
So does that kinda round off the whole circumstance and our reasoning?
Yep, I'm good now.
It's not because we're trying to hold back on hiring officers. If five, the, five veteran officers walk through that door tomorrow, we'll take all five applications and start the process.
Okay.
I can tell you that.
Good, all right.
I think it just makes sense for us to, to show that we're not funding positions that we don't have. So it's one of those things that I, I know the state and other places have gone through it many years ago. Where you get the salary dollars for all these positions, but they're not filled, yet you're, what are you doing with the money if it's not going to the officers, which is that money is, is, is placed in there for, so.
And you bring up a very good point, the worst thing I can do is sit here and say, no, I have to have funding for all thirty-three officers. When I can sit right here today and tell you, I don't think we're gonna need the dollars for those additional two positions. Until some point next year, I don't need them starting October first. So then that's just more money that's being in the budget that is not, is not needed.
Makes sense.
And then I do wanna just a- also go back to the overtime and make it very clear. That overtime is tracked heavily in the police department, and they aren't just giving it out to cover additional shifts when not needed. It is something that if they have to come in for an operation, if they're having to go to the courthouse or an investigation, things like that, then that's when that overtime hits. If we do a detail somewhere, I can see, I know you said detail, not, not third-party detail.
Right.
But if the chief and I have a discussion and we know there's a known area of speeding or things that we wanna hit hard. That, that at that point, we may pay an officer overtime to come in for that specific reason to do that operation. Um, so I just wanna be clear on that, that it's not just a free-for-all overtime, it is very structured, managed and detailed whenever it comes to the police department for their overtime.
Well, that makes sense, though, at what level does the, um, who has the authority to approve the overtime is, at what level? Does it have to go to the chief or deputy chief or can the online supervisor?
It's at the, the level necessary, so yeah, no, the, even a sergeant, you know, they're, they're, they're held accountable by the lieutenants all the way up. But they have the authority to hold people over or send somebody, you know, to cover something extra, you know.
I mean, from my aspect, none of that seems out of line, that's about ten percent. When I ran investigations, that's typically what it was, my boss said, you have a hundred hours of overtime a week, and that's it, and you divvy it up between the units. And it's all pre-approved, and, and that's it, you know, it's needed, you know, at the last minute, do I stop this guy or I don't stop this guy? Stop the guy, it turns into four or five hours, you know, they're, they're there until it's done, so.
Yeah, I, when I mentioned overtime, I wasn't questioning, I know they do a great job at controlling that, my, my only issue was making sure that. If we have to give them more money to adequately do their job, then we need to figure out a way to do that, that was, that's my only issue with this. And, and quite frankly, I agree with what, when you try to compare actual staffing versus budgeted staffing, it gets really conv- convoluted. It's very difficult sometimes to bring the two together. I was just, my personal opinion is I, I just wanna make sure that the council is willing to give them the money they need to do the job that they're, and they do a great job right now, so. I don't wanna make anybody think that I'm questioning that, cause I'm not.
Yeah, I think they know they have our support, they definitely have mine, so.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Moving on. Yeah, any other questions, oh, we're still in operation, sorry. Yeah, I was just gonna go over the, uh, capital outlay schedule and, and purchases, requests. Uh, fifty-three. So the, the north gate, the back gate of the police department, that gate has been there for several years, but it, it's, uh, manual. And the other gates, the other two gates are electric, but bringing in the trailer or the boat or some of those bigger things, even the armored vehicle are difficult to get in those gates. So we're putting it, um, you know, that's an enormous cost, I think, to add.
Finally.
It's, yeah, finally it's due, and we're gonna put electric gate back there, which we'll also make sure it closes. Uh, carport, the carport. Is for these other vehicles that we have, you know, we're, we're putting wraps on vehicles that are very costly, the armored vehicle windows, you know, they're not supposed to be in the sun constantly. Um, the boat, when it's here, I know it's gonna be at the dock, but when it's here, you know, the, the less we can have it in the sun, the better. That goes for all those vehicles, and that's what the carport is for. Uh, tasers, tasers are ongoing, you know, we replace five a year, and, uh, sometimes we have to replace more than that, but we're on a schedule of five a year just to. Rotate the forty-five tasers that we have. Patrol rifles are the same thing, um, unfortunately, the company that we purchased our current rifles from, they went out of business. Luckily, we were able to refurbish mo- uh, the rifles a couple of years ago, but that, you know, there, it's just wear and tear and age, and. We had to put them on a schedule to replace, uh, the entire agency, so that's what you see going forward there. Um, the night vision binoculars, they were in the budget, they got cut and pushed forward, um, uh, SRT rifle shield, we got cut and pushed forward. But again, you know, uh, after evaluating the equipment, those things we can do, make do for the next year and push them forward. On the Flock safety nine-one-one is another software that, uh, the officers asked for, we looked into, and it, it does seem like it's gonna benefit the agency and the officers. Uh, so we, uh, it was a victim of the cuts, but we pushed it forward, you know, to the following year.
That software work off of the Flock cameras, is it related to the whole system or?
I, it's.
Same company.
Same company, but it's more for dispatch and radio, and it allows the officers to actually listen in on the calls.
Oh, good.
You know, as they're coming in, real time.
Okay, so they can actually listen to nine-one-one calls?
Yes, sir.
Good.
That, that, that sounds reasonable. Just the cameras here, or the sheriff's office has all those Flock cameras all over and it goes over there?
It's not the cameras, it's just, the, the vendor is Flock, but it's, it's a, a different system, it's through the nine-one-one and it's through, uh, for dispatch and for the radios in the cars.
I, I think it's great that they can listen to nine-one-one calls, because, you know, it kinda gives them a, a heads up of something that's coming before it's actually called out to them and they can be prepared for things, that's good.
Hmm, I need to learn more about that, that's pretty cool sound.
There's a couple of different companies that are out there, sheriff's office utilizing one or not.
No, 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 I, I just gotta learn something about that, so I, I don't know.
So the SRT gas masks, they're just, they're, the ones we have are really outdated and, and aged, and you know, stuff deteriorates in the heat, you know, the materials that it's made out of, so. The majority of those are being replaced this year, and then, um, you know, there's some future expansion or additional units for the years in the future. And then the SRT rifles are the same thing, they're purchased from the same company, and it's high liability, and that's, uh, you know, rather than have a malfunction on one of those high operations. We wanna try to get those switched out sooner than later, so those are on the capital.
How many of those, how many of those are there, there, there's no number here, is it?
Is that?
Ten.
Ten, so it's, okay, they're forty, yeah, that's.
It's ten for patrol and ten for SRT, and we're trying to do patrol over the next couple of years.
I was just trying to see what a unit cost, that's a reasonable unit cost on those things, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, uh, some more capital outlay that's out of discretionary sales tax, uh, obviously the vehicles that we do every year, the body cameras comes out of that. And then the CAD and RMS system, um, it's the maintenance fee going forward. That is.
Are we more aggressively selling our old vehicles? Cause I know at one time we talked about, cause they've seemed to be just piling up someplace and, and, uh, but we're pretty aggressively selling the old ones.
They're pretty much gone, for the most part.
Okay. So our volunteers are now driving.
Newer vehicles, is a couple more.
One generation back, I suppose, didn't.
Yes, sir.
We're still due four cars this year, I believe, so then four more will get pushed down.
Okay.
Nineteen ninety-two Crown Victoria.
I don't know how much you get back.
Yeah, Crown Vic should be pretty much gone, almost gone.
I don't know how much you get back on those things, but it's terrible, and I, one, I, one time, several years ago, I drove by this lot over and I saw like ten police cars sitting back there in the corner and they hadn't moved in a month, you know, so I couldn't figure out what's.
Uh, yeah, unfortunately, I think they got overwhelmed because we got so many delivered at once, it was like three years of vehicles we finally got delivered in short span of time, so the. It took the garage staff a little while to get rid of the other ones, but.
Have you done a reevaluation of the potential cost on those, cause you know what's happening in the vehicle marketplace right now? And I don't know whether you're, I don't know what, your, your budget might be based on quotes that you have seen and. You know, that, we could get killed on that right now, and what's happening in the vehicle market.
Right, I mean, we, yeah, we, we, we did the quotes when we did the CIP, so the, you know, we have them from March, but we, you know, we're stuck like anybody else with the changes that come.
I hate to do it, but it might be worth thinking about ordering quicker than you anticipated, because, I mean, we're gonna get hit, just like with the fireworks, we're gonna get hit with tear fits on. On vehicles and everything else for what's over with, you know, so. If you don't buy an electric vehicle, you got until October. Or a hybrid, you got until October.
Yeah, page fifty-four, just like I did in, uh, administration, I just wanna go through some of the changes, you know, if there's a significant change, I'll highlight it. Um, not too significant, but R and M vehicles, you know, we went down two thousand dollars, but that's with the expectation of the majority of the fleet being newer. If you go down to R and M of radios, it's doubled from two thousand to four thousand, there was a high increase in the labor cost, uh, I mean, I think it tripled, I don't. You know, communications international is our vendor, one of the only vendors, and, um, they tripled their labor cost, which we just had to deal with so far, and we're, and we're trying to budget. Uh, in the future to deal with that. Uh, K nine expenditures went up fifteen hundred dollars, but that's, uh, increase in, um, costs, you know, like everything else. The departmental supplies went up from sixty-six thousand to eighty-three thousand, and that's an increase in, um, ammunition. Um, not only the cost, but we had to purchase a lot more ammunition to train, so we got new firearms this year. And, uh, you'll see in the next, I was gonna go, where small tools and equipment went down from twenty-five thousand to seven thousand, and that's cause this year we purchased new firearms. And they have new sights, new red dot sights, and we need to do a lot more training, so we had to add some ammunition, and it's still, you know, we, we. Tried to be, uh, consider it to the budget, cause we could've used more, but we, this is the amount I think we can safely train with and get used to these new guns with, and that was that, why the increase is there.
At least the new ammo is a little cheaper than the old ammo.
Right, yeah, for the new nine millimeter.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, you need it for the training, there's no sense, I mean, having weapons out there and guys and girls don't have the necessary training to use those, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely.
And there, there was an increase in training and education, and, uh, most of that reason was the gun range that we use increased their cost for next year, so it's going up. But that, uh. But that, oh, is all I have for police operations. Are there any questions? Anybody before I move on?
No, they do a great job.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Great job.
So the next budget is investigations and that starts, it start on page fifty-seven. I think we already covered the, you know, there's five investigators, detectives assigned to that unit and we covered the fact that one's retiring and that leaves us with two. And I just wanted to highlight that there's no capital outlay for investigations this year. If we go to the next page fifty-eight, I'll just go over some of the changes again in the operating expenditures. So professional standard or professional services is going down and that's a fee established by the crime lab. So it went down, you know, three or four thousand dollars and that's based on our population and the submissions that we turn in for examination. So that's the why there's fluctuations there and luckily this year it went down. Internet access, it went from three thousand to four hundred and sixty-five. That was we the detectives, you know, they have laptops and they also have cell phones. Not every employee gets cell phones, but they do have cell phones. So we are gonna cut off the internet from the laptops and use the hotspot, which will save, you know, we'll get that almost three thousand dollar increase. Not increase in budget, but sorry, savings. And then R and M of office equipment, there's a went from sixteen thousand nineteen thousand. That is mostly software that got transferred from the administration budget. So it's not necessarily an increase. It was just a budget adjustment from one budget to the other. And then you see again in R and M of radios, it goes from five hundred to two thousand. That's the labor increase from Communications International. And then the only other significant change is down at dues and memberships. It went from seven hundred to thirteen fifty and that's photo lineup software that moved from operations to investigations where it's utilized. So are there any questions about investigations before I move on?
All right, dispatch.
So dispatch also on page sixty, we'll go to sixty-two, but sixty-one is where they start. There's no capital outlay for dispatch this year either. And just so everyone knows, we do, we have full staffing. You know, in previous years, we were short in records, which was in the admin budget and in dispatch, and we've had some transfers from dispatch to records. And we're actually full in both divisions, so. In reference to any significant changes in operating expenditures for dispatch, R and M of office equipment, we had an increase of one of the softwares that we use, Critical. And that's the main reason it went from twenty-five hundred to thirty-three hundred. You can see the increase in labor for R and M of radios. And then there was decrease in departmental supplies and that's there's a chair that we purchased this year and we're able to cut it down, so. Other than that, there's no changes.
Say I cut. My shoulders are big enough.
Victim of the cuts.
We have a bunch of new chairs.
Is there any questions in reference to the dispatch budget? And then our last budget of the five is code enforcement. Capital outlay, you can see that there's a sixteen thousand dollar. It's gonna be a fee for software that we're looking for that's in reference to the strategic plan. Code enforcement is a big part of the strategic plan from the police department. And we're trying to get a software that's gonna make it easier for everyone, the citizens, the council, anybody to be able to log in and see what code enforcement is doing, to make a report, to to check on your report. I think it's really gonna be beneficial. We've done a lot of demos in the last couple of months to look at this software. And there's some really unique stuff out there that's, I think, is gonna help the agency, the city as a whole with some of this reporting issues and some of the just communications and.
That'll help with a lot of complaints. I think the only complaints I get about the police department are code enforcement complaints. So it's I haven't heard anybody screaming at me for traffic violations yet, but they seem to scream about code enforcement all the time.
So everybody will be able to log in and anybody can look at that.
So we haven't gotten the software yet, but that's that's what we're looking for and the ones we have demoed, you know, that's good. That's one of the record requisites that we put on them is.
Somebody on Easy Street says, I don't like what this guy's doing across the street. They can go in and look and see if there's similar complaints in other areas and
They can also file their own complaint and then they can check on it rather than call a answering machine or, you know, try to re-report it, you know, there should be. And they can also, it should be updated, like what stage of the process it is, you know, if they were noticed and it's waiting on magistrate and they can get their answers. As long as they can use a phone or a computer, they should be able to.
Will that flow all the way through the enforcement process? Does it flow all the way through hearings and and decisions?
It's supposed to, yes, sir.
Okay, so you'll be able to see.
And then also document, you know, print out reports.
This has been to the special magistrate and it's they were found guilty and there's certain.
The dispositions are definitely.
That's perfect.
Yeah, I think a lot of people, when they file those complaints or whatever, they want to see where they are. Nobody contacted. They want to see has anything been done, what has been done, when it was done, you know, those types of things. And I think this is a great opportunity for everybody to be able to view those complaints and see what stage you're seeing. If it's not moving, then they can call someone and say, hey, nothing's been done on this in a month. What's going on? But you're gonna be able to track that to see and make sure it's followed up.
I was gonna say, the assistant is supposed to have built-in reminders to remind the code enforcement officer, you know, if they haven't been back. And then also alert the supervisor that.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's important there for sure.
This is worth sixteen thousand dollars in aggravation to the officers, to the code enforcement officers, because people are constantly calling them and complaining and screaming and why haven't you done this? Why haven't you done that? Now they've got a place to go see it, so it's worth it. Now, I did notice on the salaries on code enforcement, that's the largest percentage of increase between year-to-year increases, forty, I think about forty-six percent. Is there some particular reason for that?
So if if you look at the amended budget last year, it's it's an increase of about thirty-six thousand from that. The code enforcement specialist position was being filled during the past fiscal years. So there was some 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 openings for that that was covered within this. And then also I think that there might have been some pay addition or pay changes with the new person that came in, came from an existing position. So they wouldn't have came in right at the bottom.
Okay.
So that's why the twenty-six budget is higher.
Okay.
But if you look back at the amended, that number, as we discussed yesterday, the budget, we reference it back to projected expenditures instead of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. So the projected is going to be skewed because of positions were open or if we hired somebody at a higher salary.
Okay.
So if we go to page sixty-five, I can go over some of the operating expenditures that had changes. And the first one's the other contractual services at the top. It's going from five fifty to nine hundred and that's due to an increase in a court reporter fees, which I believe you guys may have heard of it from the attorney. Traveling per diem is going up from five hundred to eight hundred and that's because we have staffed the code enforcement specialist position and we're gonna send her to some training. Postage went up from thirty-eight to forty-five hundred and this increase in postage costs and and amount of postage going out. And then departmental supplies, it's going from eight hundred to fifteen eighty and the that increase, that almost the full amount of that increase is based on the strategic plan. And there's marketing supplies that are necessary to carry out the strategic plan for code enforcement. And then the last, the training and education also doubled and and that's because the code enforcement specialist training as well.
Now, from a succession planning perspective, I'm not sure how old Richard is, but our code enforcement officers both have pretty long tenures or a potential that we might need to start thinking about budgeting some type of training position in that area or are you thinking that if one of them decides to retire, that you might be able to find somebody that's qualified, that's been through the proper certifications and so forth or?
Hopefully, we could find somebody qualified, but I do with the way it's set up, I mean, the lieutenant, you know, they have a lieutenant that's over them. Hopefully, they don't both leave at the same time, so there'll be someone there to train the other one. And they work very closely with the records department and the code enforcement specialist.
Okay.
And I think between, you know, all of us, we'll be able to get them trained, the new person.
It's a it's a high demand position. They probably get more calls than anybody on your staff, I would assume. And so, you know, all of a sudden, one of them decides that they want to retire and the next thing you know, we're caught in the pickle on that, so.
I think we should be okay.
Yeah, and I and I just, I think it was later last week or early this week, one of the two, I'd sent out the quarterly report on code enforcement to you all that the chief, that they compile now, since we aren't, you know, recording all of that information in our in our quarterly financial report anymore. We'll make sure you all are getting that quarterly report that better delineates, you know, the number of calls that are going on and and actions that's being taken with that.
Yep. Is there a plan in the future for adding a third position to code or thoughts of it?
Um, I mean, we, so we did not have that discussion this year. I know we had that discussion last year. Our plan right now is to continue to proceed with how we're operating. I feel like we've we've gotten better response and and compliance over probably the last year, two years or so. I can tell you that anytime I get any reports of anything, I go right to the police department and code enforcement is on it. And also that also goes in whenever I get phone calls from residents saying, hey, I did this, haven't heard anything. It's not because they didn't follow up on it, it's just the resident didn't call code enforcement and request an update. I mean, or the code enforcement officer didn't call the resident and give them an update. One of the two. I think, you know, as we continue to grow and expand, I think we're gonna have to look at that. Especially, you know, as, you know, the annexation in future years, that's gonna require it. But I think right now we're we're holding holding ourselves, we're able to get out and address issues. And in my opinion, they're addressing them quickly. Now, the process is slow. We can't, you know, that basically currently right now, we can't do anything about the process today. That, I think, is where we get a lot of the complaints and confusion about code enforcement. People want an immediate response to that. They get the immediate officer response. The officer goes out, evaluates the situation and addresses it. But it's the time that's given in regards to notices before it goes to the magistrate and all those steps that are lengthy processes that just are not. And also, if someone comes into compliance, they come into compliance. There's no penalty for that currently. So that's, you know, one, you know, one of the other things with that. I think those are the biggest complaints we get about code enforcement. People say they're not doing their job. It's more along the lines of not our officers doing their job. They are doing their job. It's the process that they don't agree with next time.
I I mean, the complaints that I get are not necessarily at all about the officers themselves. I mean, somebody will call me and they'll say, oh, yeah, well, Richard was here quickly. He talked to me, he did this, but why aren't they fixing that problem over across the street? Well, Richard said it's not, it's not illegal. Well, that's not, he can't control that. That's our problem to control. I think we do need, as a council, to have a conversation about that side of the code enforcement side of it, because all they can do is enforce what we've said they have to enforce. They can't make up the rules themselves. They have to enforce what they what we said to enforce. And that's where the big complaints come from, is not, not the officers themselves.
And I wish I had the data and maybe the new software will track it, but from my best guess, I think eight or nine times by the time I get a phone call and asked about something or asked for code enforcement, look into it. When I call them, they've already dealt with it. They've already seen it. They're in the middle of working on it.
Yeah.
It's something that they're dealing with and it's and it's, I mean, probably nine out of ten times, if not more.
So they're able to manage the caseload right now with the two of them the way it is and you don't see any issues with them managing their caseload?
Correct. I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't foresee for now. I I think the software is gonna help even more. I think it's more of a communication thing than manpower thing right now.
My third, my third person also comes from, obviously, New River County, went and added a nighttime code enforcement officer to their to their ranks because there are some things you just can't. Unfortunately, when people work during the day, there's things that are happening at night that can only be seen at night. And I know they did that and I was just wondering if that was something we needed to consider, maybe with the third person is having a nighttime code enforcement officer that addresses the other issues that can only be seen when it's happening.
So I don't know necessarily that we have the workload within the city for a for a nighttime officer. However, I will state they have started to be a little creative on on some of that and and they've created some operations for nighttime visits and nighttime oversight amongst our code enforcement.
Good to hear.
I know that they just recently did a a plan for an operation. I think that's probably still in the works, but it's a, it was a priority of mine based on stuff that I was hearing from the public, honestly. And it has to do with RVs on property and people staying in them, which obviously typically won't find that during the during the day. They're not gonna be in there. So that is something that's coming and and we'll continue to do that on things that we feel as though are nighttime issues. We'll continue to develop those plans and have those guys come in and address those at nighttime.
Okay, cool.
But as long as they can handle the load that they have now and they're doing a great job. So, you know, we get a lot of people in compliance straight away with the first approach from a code enforcement officer, people comply. And but we do have the tough ones that don't comply immediately. So as long as their caseload is managed, I think that's great, so.
Yeah, the big problem is when they don't comply or
Yeah.
And the one that I get the most calls on is when the the code enforcement officer will go out and he'll cite somebody and they'll they'll apply just comply just enough to get him off their back. And then they then they
Right back.
Then they then they do it right over again. And that's where I think the council needs to get involved in, because there are state statutes that allow us to do certain things for repeat offenders. And we haven't provided the code officers the opportunity, I don't think, to 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 properly do the repeat offender process. Because we, I mean, and the quicker we get for those types of people, the quicker we get to the repeat offender process, that cuts down the time that they have to give them to comply. It cuts down a lot of things. And it it gets us to a mass hearing much quicker for those repeat offenders. And the code officers right now can't do anything about that. I mean, hey, you came in compliance. Oh, I'm out there two weeks now. Oh, God, they came in compliance again. I'm out there two weeks now. They came in compliance again. And they can't do more than that unless we provide some assistance in that process to modify in our procedures or processes some way or another.
Perhaps that could be agenda item for a council meeting one time.
A great agenda item. And I know we don't want to get too deep into that here, but if you feel your officers can handle the caseload and and doing everything you need, then I'm good.
For now, I'd like to, yeah, you know, see, get the software, get the strategic plan going and evaluate. Like anything else, you know, as as the city expands, especially with the new property, you know, obviously, it's gonna have to go up, but for now, I think we're good.
And maybe we'll get some taxes, but new property, they'll pay for it.
Yeah, so anything additional, any additional questions for the police department?
No, I think they're doing a great job, man. Appreciate what you've done with the budget that we've, I know we're asking for tough cuts and stuff, but those are things that we have to do now and appreciate you guys being here and being amenable to what we're talking about, so.
You know, yeah, I know you can't make everybody happy all the time, but obviously, the officers are happy. We have, you know, a basically full staff and that's that's a sign of good leadership, so thank you. I can't remember the last time I saw YouTube with a with a somebody filming a police officer and smashing doing something wrong, so. Because they're everywhere.
Thanks for that one.
Fred's buddy will find that. I guess it wasn't.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go right into the building department and then right after that, we'll take a short break. And then I did something I failed to mention at the very beginning. I requested the finance department with Brian. We moved his meeting to after MIS, so he'll be the last one to go. Because I think that'll probably be a little bit more of a lengthy conversation. And I also kind of gave him a timeline of doing it after lunch, so. I anticipate trying to get through everything else before lunch and then we'll bring Brian in to close out the the meeting after lunch.
Put that one to the bottom.
What's your buddy's name? I can't remember your buddy's name right now.
I don't know. Bob McCarman? That's my buddy. It's odd. Chris Nunn, Brian Benton.
Go buddy.
All right, so I'll I'll kind of get it started as Wayne's coming up here. Building department, page one thirty-eight is where I'm gonna get started. Um, building department page 138 is where I'm going to get started.
Okay.
Um, just want to highlight a couple of things. Um, one is you'll see anticipated revenues for the budget. Um, you'll continue to see those are decreasing to a certain extent. Um, nothing major alarming, but we all know that building is continuing to happening, but it has slowed. Um, and so that, that is something that we're keeping in, in the back of our minds as we look at this budget and, and continue to proceed with that. Um, you'll see his expenses have obviously, you know, risen and I'll let Wayne give you a little bit of information on that about some succession planning and, and things we've taken into account currently already this fiscal year. Um, and we are, um, anticipating to use, uh, reserves to fund the building department budget. To highlight on that, using reserves, please remember, we have gotten hit for two years in a row in our audit for having excess funds in reserves in the building department. We can't continue to, um, operate with those large excess amounts in building department. So we made that a priority this year, um, to try to reduce that. And also, that is part of the, part of, um, succession planning is included in that. And then there's also some software and some other things that Wayne has shown in here, um, and capital purchases, I apologize, um, with that. So, uh, as I'll turn it over to him here shortly, his proposed budget for FY '26 is 1,109,000, or sorry, proposed revenues is 1,109,650 dollars. Um, this is a increase of about 6.4% from the projected for this year. Um, so we, you know, we kind of are still relatively close to that. It's only a difference of 65,000, a little over 65,000 dollars. Um, and then looking at his expenses, um, he's expected to, his budget currently shows expenses in the amount of 1,585,407 dollars and an increase of 25% in the budget. And that, um, is largely, largely because of the succession plan and adding, uh, or reclassifying a position. Um, and then also some additional operating expenses and to try to come into alignment with this, with the auditors, um, on where we have our reserves set at. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wayne to take you through his, um, positions, his capital outlay and his operating budget.
Good morning.
Morning. You're on that. No, you, uh, there you go.
Um, so just to talk a little bit about what we have done this year. Um, so one of our succession planning goals was to, uh, look at, uh, remote video inspections, virtual inspections. And so we were successful in, in getting a program that is already connected with our, my government online building department program. Um, so it's, it's seamless and it, it seemed to be pretty successful. Um, especially with roofing, it's only certain inspections that we can do that way. But, um, basically, uh, when they set up, they have the option of setting up an RVI inspection and then, uh, they contact us when we're ready. We have some plans examiners are in the office that they can, uh, then send them a link. They open the link and they're able to, with their phone, uh, have a really clear picture. We can talk to them, we can tell them zoom in, zoom out, uh, whatever we want to see. And that's typically with roof inspections and air conditioning inspections, some of the plumbing inspections. So, uh, it's been pretty successful. We're doing between, around the average of 60 to 80 a month. So the roofers really like it. So it, it allows them to complete a portion of the roof, like the renailing. So when they get a strip, they have to re-nail. They have to wait for an inspector that kind of slows them down, so, um, and we do try to coordinate with them so we can get the inspection done timely. But with an RVI, they can just call us when they're ready. They can go over the whole roof, look at it, we can be satisfied with it, we can sign it off, they can go on to the next step, dry it in.
And they're, they're, they're using an electric device to transmit.
Yeah.
They're, they're on one side doing that and you're on the other side looking at it. That's neat, that's really neat.
Sitting in his office, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, it doesn't always work. I mean, there's times when, you know, connections are not good, but we, you know, the city is small enough that when we have that problem, we contact one of our inspectors or out in the field and say, hey, this RVI didn't work. Could you go over there and do their inspection? So, um, we've had nothing but good, good feedback on it. So we're going to continue to use it and, uh, and that's one aspect that we're trying to, like I said, part of our succession, or not succession, but our strategic plan.
Um, and real quick, that was identified in our strategic plan objectives for this year. Um, and it is something that improves the efficiency of the building department and I think it's a great addition. And we, as a compliment to Wayne for really thinking outside of the box. Obviously, we had seen it, we had heard it elsewhere in the country really, but for him thinking outside of the box and working with his current vendor and making it happen.
It's taken several years. I mean, we've seen it, uh, co-conferences, there are some vendors out there. We tried a couple of vendors that really just the connectivity didn't work. This one seems to work pretty well.
And, and do you have that actually fully installed now on your, that's neat.
We're doing it, about three months now.
Yeah.
Um, Brian touched a little bit on succession planning. So this year, we hired another inspector, uh, building inspector three. Um, he comes to us with a, a lot of experience, a lot of, uh, licensed certifications. Uh, you know, in our field, we have to have licensed people doing, uh, inspections. You can't send an unlicensed person out there. So that's, that's the structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing. Um, so to get those certifications, it requires experience. You have to have the approval by the state, you have to sit for the exam. It's a, it's a long, kind of lengthy process and, uh, uh, but once you get that license, then you're able to go out in the field and do those types of inspections. So getting people with multi-certified is, is, they're hard to find. And, um, a gentleman that, uh, worked with us with, uh, when we were using private provider for a little while, um, we know him. And so he was kind of between jobs. And, um, we have some people that are seriously thinking about retirement, going to be big shoes to fill. And we were hopeful that this person's going to be able to do that and, and part of our succession planning. And, um, so he's going to bring a lot to the table for the building department.
And I, I just want to highlight, that was one, so Wayne had a building official or building inspector position that was open. So we were able to make that work with doing it just as a reclassification. And it was a quick little timeline. We had, we knew he was available and before someone else could come in, we, we wanted to make sure that, that we took that into account. Wayne and I had previously met, you know, a few months before that in regards to succession planning. Um, and he had some concerns about, you know, upper, the experience in, in his department. Um, and I told him, I said, well, let's formulate a plan and, and the moment we can find somebody or locate them, then we'll, we'll try to make it work. So that was our plan, that's what we did, um, and that's why you'll see in there, there's no new positions. It was just a reclassification, um, for that position.
Uh, one of the things that we do keep in contractual services, um, we do keep an extra fund in there for, uh, part-time help if we need it through a private provider. It's like 78,000 in there. We don't typically use that money, um, but it's there in case we need it. Um, should something happen or we, uh, somebody gets hurt. Like I said, it takes licensed people to do this work. So, um, if we need to go to the outside to get somebody to fill a spot, um, we have that contingency plan in place. Um, and then the virtual inspections, uh, there is a fee associated with that. So there, it is $20 an inspection. So right now, um, we're absorbing that cost as a service to the, to the builders and the community. Um, in the future, we can take a look to see if we want to add that cost to, for that service.
Well, that's not, that's not a line item on here, cause I'm trying to find it.
Well, sorry, so it's. Other contractual services as the virtual inspection provider.
Okay, yeah, I just don't, it's not.
Yeah, so it's under file 33400, other contractual, that lump sum of 103,150.
Yeah, cause I've got that.
Those are details in, underneath that line item.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, I see what you're saying. I don't have your sheet, so.
Yeah, it's under contractual services.
They have cheat sheets.
Yeah, I know, it looked like it, right?
You know, I mean, come on.
So, so right now, an inspection, you know, whatever, let's just say a roof inspection, there's a cost associated with that. But if there's a virtual inspection, it's costing us $20.
Extra.
Out of our pocket right now.
Yes.
Yeah, but we're not having to send a man out there, so that.
No, no, understood, understood. There is, there is some savings, vehicle and manpower out of the field.
I would love to see a, uh, a comparison of, of cost of manpower, uh, gas compared to the cost of the program, the $20 per.
Well, it still requires an inspector to do the inspection.
Right, so you're not really saving the manpower, you're just saving the gas and.
Correct, and I, and I.
It's just service that we're providing is really what we're.
Yeah, in our discussion, we actually do lose a little bit of money on those virtual inspections, just to be clear. Um, however, I think it was more about the service provided.
Yeah.
And we were willing to, to fund that, um, and see that reduction. So that, that will affect us at a certain point, um, but obviously, it's still controlled on what we can do virtual inspections on. And it was more so that, you know, specifically on a roof, you know, they tear it off, they want to get it back on and, and for the purpose, not just of the contractor, but the homeowner as well. So being able to do those virtual inspections, they can do it right here in the office. Meanwhile, every, all the other inspectors are out there and, you know, Wayne or Dan or somebody of that nature can do it here in the office.
So the, the other aspect of it, like sort of air conditioning replacements. So homeowner has to typically take the day off from work to be home, so the air conditioner is installed. Then they have to take another day off on the day of the inspection so they can be there to let us in to be able to see it. So this, uh, you know, helps the homeowner because they don't have to take that second day off from work. I mean, they can be there, as soon as his install is done, they can contact us, we can do the RVI and, uh, we can, it'll all be finished in one day.
Well, the other aspect is the, the number of inspe, you got an inspector in an office here that can do, let's say with the virtual, they can do 25 inspections a day. I don't know if that's a valid number or not.
No, not that many, but maybe, but.
Four, five, six. Five or six, but they're, if they're out in the field, they might only be able to do two with travel time between positions, between jobs. I mean, there's a lot of that involved.
They gotta run sometimes because they, they have a lot of inspections. So this belittles the load for the inspectors a little bit. Um, you know, but, but just the value of it, and, and I want to say that, you know, our permit fees are probably the lowest around. We don't charge a lot for these permits, for roofing, air conditioning replacements, things like that. I mean, we charge $79 for, uh, to process the permit, issue the permit and go out and do an inspection. You know, we're not, we're not making money on those, that's for sure. So the, the added cost of the virtual inspection, um, contractors love it. I mean, I think it's a good service to provide, you know, whether we decide we need to charge in the future. I think, you know, you know, once, once it's established, then we can think about that.
I mean, if what we're charging is covering, covering the cost of doing, running the building department and if we're, we're covering those costs, I, I don't think the building department should be in the, in the business of, of a profit center. So it can't really be, so, I mean, uh, unless, you know, it's helped to make up for other things. So I, I'm okay, I guess, with that. I, I just think that probably at some point, we're going to have to discuss the convenancy or.
Right, like I said, we don't charge a lot to begin with, so we have to think about whether we want to charge in the future.
But for right now, it's.
It's a huge benefit for them as well as it benefits us.
Right now, they have so much money, the auditors are questioning whether we should have it or not, so.
I know, it's one of the other reasons, honestly, that we didn't charge.
Yeah.
You know, cause we thought, well, let's, let's provide this, see how it goes.
I like it.
Um, I don't really have, um, we are purchasing a, uh, capital outlay, a printer, a copier, HP Design Jet printer, large scale maps and printing. Um, that'll be shared with community development as well.
Is that included in this increase from 30 to 50,000 for, um, R and, uh, R and M office?
No, it's capital outlay, that one's capital outlay.
Oh, it was a capital outlay, okay.
Um, R and M office equipment, that was, so. Sorry. Increases there. Okay, so forerunner software is another thing I want to talk about. That, that's something we're currently, uh, just purchased, uh, you all just approved that a couple of meetings ago. And, um, that software, actually today, we're having our kickoff meeting with that. So that software is going to really help us with our floodplain management and other things. Um, so, uh, that's an additional cost that's in our, R and M office equipment.
Is that, is that typically done through an office equipment line item or would that be a?
It's, it's software, software.
It's software. That's where we tip, that's where we have all of, uh, his softwares are included in that.
All right, all right.
Yeah, in, in regards to software computer items. So, and just to clarify, I know over here, it says 30,000 projected, but that didn't, these, this document wouldn't have included that because I'm, I'm sure that this, uh, was put together and probably not touched in that line item since we approved a purchase at the council meeting for that software.
Yeah.
So, and that software is just shot $20,000, which showcases that entire increase.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the, the increase is mainly due to the, the purchase of the forerunner software, um, which is going to be key. I mean, that, we don't have any kind of software now that tracks floodplain properties or in the event of a storm, it's mandatory FEMA that we have to do substantial improvements, substantial damage inspections. And we have no computerized mechanism way of doing that. And, and this is going to really help us in that regard.
We might as well get used to doing that kind of stuff, cause FEMA is going to be gone and we're going to have to.
You know, it's, 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 it's an important aspect of, not rebuilding in a floodplain with the same, you know, uh, requirements that they had originally and then, and then just get wiped out again. So FEMA is really adamant about that.
Well, that, that would also fit within the state statutes that, that requires that our building department, um, not do certain things when it's within a floodplain, within certain timeframes of storms and so forth. So, uh, they still know where it fits for that software.
Well, as far as like can't raise fees and things like that during that time.
Well, they can't change zoning, they can't, a lot of stuff they can't do, yeah.
But this will help us pinpoint and run reports and things that we're going to need. And the day-to-day, uh, floodplain management, so we have, um, uh, flood, uh, we have final surveys and elevation certificates, stuff that we have to report back. And this is going to be a good way to, to handle all that.
Any additional questions for the building department?
Yeah, the permitting, everything is going good, we're on schedule. I think that, what is it, seven days now the state is mandated on a permit.
On certain projects.
On certain projects, right?
Yes.
I, I know some are having trouble with the turnaround of those, but.
No, we're not behind. I mean, I have, well, especially with the new hire, now we have like three people that are doing plan review full-time, pretty much full-time. They go out in the field with as needed to do inspections as well. But, um, you know, we're not having any problems keeping up, turning things around quickly.
I'll tell you, the, the, what, five and a half years, every single time I've gotten a call from somebody about the city holding them up, every single time, every single time. It's been a contractor that didn't submit, a contractor wasn't doing what they were supposed to be doing, unlicensed people doing work for, there was always something. And every single time we checked, you guys were on top of it and doing everything that needed to happen, so.
That's what they told the homeowner.
That is, that is exactly, they tell the homeowner that because they're behind on their own stuff. And instead of taking the heat, they put it on, oh, the city's holding us up.
Oh, the city, the city, who's the city? What individual is the city?
So every single time, over five and a half years, not one time, and it's probably been about nine or 10, every single time, it has not been the city holding anybody up. It's always been usually the contractor.
We get those phone calls too, wanting to know what's going on with their permit. And it's like, there's no application here. They said you lost it.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys are standing on top of that because that's so important there, obviously.
And most of our stuff is online now, so it's all, we're virtually paperless. And, um, so everything's coming through our MGO portals, um, you know, it's documents that need to come in even after the permit's been issued, corrections, they, they upload it to the portal. Um, and so that's pretty seamless now.
Good.
And I have two, um, we added one more this year, another clerk, uh, that are doing scanning, full-time scanning. So we're trying to get rid of all of our old documents and get everything archived.
Beautiful.
So we really have no more paperwork and everything will be in Laserfish or, or building department program.
And they have virtual inspections, that, that is a, a super benefit for everybody, so it's good.
Well, thank you, Wayne, we appreciate it, sir.
All right, thanks, sir.
And, uh, if we could just take a break, uh, we'll come back in about five minutes. Thank you.
Less than five.
All right, we'll get it back started here. We've got Mr. Sabo here from the airport just to kind of kick it off a little bit. And I'll let him go into more details regarding revenues and expenses and stuff. But just want to highlight, total revenues projected for FY twenty-six are eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, which is an increase of about six point two percent over last year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sabo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. With the, our past year, just to touch on some of our accomplishments, we've gotten three of the new medium square hangars finally up. They're, they are about ready for bringing in some tenants. We're still looking at the five remaining properties over there to see if we want to try and fill those before we put tenants in and turn it into a big construction site. But the, those projects are done. If we decide otherwise, we'll go ahead and start signing up leases for those. Hangar D had its north and south office build outs completed. There's a major tenant in there, servicing aircraft and doing simulator training and things along that line. Our automated weather system has been updated with brand-new sensors, tracking information that uploads to the national network, making it safer and easier for pilots to access our local information. And we got done our design phase for the new taxiway golf, which is up on the northwest side of the airport. That project went out to bid. That bid comes in this afternoon as a matter of fact, so we're hopeful to see what kind of results we get from, from that request. And of course, we got the netting up between hangar D and the golf course. And with this bid that comes in, we'll be prepared to actually start that construction phase for our taxiway golf. The year ahead, we're going to begin the, the design phase of changing the apron in front of the terminal building to gain us some more parking. Preliminary exhibits, looks like we're going to go from six parking spaces to at least twelve. And this will provide us more transient parking and provide opportunities to serve not just our, our local pilots, but a lot more visitors and aircraft passing through using Sebastian for fueling and temporary storage. We also have a grant in that's coming in for runway ten twenty-eight. This is just to do a crack repair and seal. If you recall, last year, we did a total rehabilitation on five twenty-three. Ten twenty-eight is in, in much better shape, but by doing this repair and seal coat, it's going to push out any major work for it at least two to three years, if not more, and will keep such major projects from being so close together. It'll provide us a little bit more time in there. And then we'll be coming out of these design phases, looking for the construction money and these grants to actually build the terminal apron, to actually do the work for runway ten twenty-eight. And then we're looking ahead towards our future. The last two under our goals there are up on the northwest corner again to design the golf apron, which will be adjacent to the new golf taxiway, and then the design of the infrastructure for that same area, which will be bringing in the road and the related utilities that will come in along fence line on the northwest side. This will permit us to start delineating parcels up there in that area and starting to do ground leases and allow building either for ourselves or for prospective tenants to increase our revenues at the airport, both in rent and in just operations. Under our capital projects, you'll see the, our share, the city's share of some of these things in this year. The designing the golf apron, our match to the grant is fifty thousand dollars. The construction of the terminal apron expansion, we were able to secure an FAA grant for that and brought our exposure cost on that down to a little less than twenty-eight thousand dollars. To construct the taxiway golf, that amount, just shy of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. That's one of two grants that were put together, or a grant and amendment for the total project, and we're able to start that now that we have that second funding in hand. And then you see the design phase for the northwest access, fifty thousand dollars this year to start to lay out that infrastructure and that road coming in. So that's basically where we're, we're focusing on a lot of things right now. We can kind of take a look at some of the line items, but if there's any questions before we, we start to take a look at those. All right, and the ups and downs in the, the basic line items, other contractual services was one that went up by not quite a thousand dollars. Basically, those are just price increases and everything from monitoring the fire alarms. We have a, a brief reduction in contractual services for the AWOS system as the one-year maintenance plan and program for that has been absorbed in this year's renovation, and all that's under warranty, so we will have that cost returned next year. But other than that, our contractual services are confined to everything from backflow testing, fire extinguishers, the storage tank permits, and testing and inspection and things along that line. Further down, under equipment leases, Mr. Benton and I talked about the fact that we have been fortunate and self-sufficient and a lot of our equipment's been very dependable, so we've knocked that down to only seven hundred and fifty from a thousand. Hopefully, we don't even need that, but it's always good to have it just in case some equipment is to go down and we're not able to complete the tasks that we need to do. Buildings, that's kind of an odd one there. You'll see the amended budget for R and M owned buildings of forty-three thousand, two hundred. That was a, a one-time increase to get us through some air conditioner repairs, emergency work that had to be done at the terminal building. That work is completed, so that will come back down to what would be a more normal but slightly higher amount of eighteen thousand. We do have some issues that we need to watch in the coming years of several different things in our buildings as we age. Everything from the sun to the weather and the like, to, to do our normal upkeep, things such as carpeting, maybe some roof work, things along that line. So we're trying to keep it to a minimum, but we don't want anything to get so far out of hand that it'll cost us more in the long run.
Jeff, does that, any, any way you talk about at the terminal building, the emergency operations room in there? Is the work that's going to need, is that included in that or is that separate?
At this point, that's, we're able to get in there almost minimally. Now, anything that goes above and beyond what I'm providing for the building, some of the technical changes and things along that line, I'm not seeing any of that. But we've been able to clean up the room relatively quickly. I've got bids coming in right now to, for my part. Facilities has already repainted the room, and we're looking to put some carpet in there just to make it more presentable and usable. And after that, I, I have the shell and what the city chooses to do from there will come from another area. Let's see, further down under operating equipment, we've been fortunate so far that we haven't had a lot of things break, so we've dropped that by three thousand dollars down to twenty-nine thousand. We did update the, or raise the R and M for fencing. There are some large stretches of our security fence that I have some concerns about and we're going to have to watch. The next time you go down Airport Drive West, when you're kind of looking down the fence line, you'll see a couple areas where the galvanizing is given up and it's brown. The fence is rusting. So hopefully, all the poles and all the other parts of that will be fine. It's just a matter of putting up the new netting. And we'll piece that in as necessary along with some, some gate motor upgrades. The last gate motor that we put in ran around three thousand, and as long as they continue to maintain themselves, they'll be okay. But we might try and do like one a year to make sure that the gate motors stay functional for access to the airport. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Each, each, yeah, the cameras, we're, we actually have a separate grant right now for the security systems. And originally, that was sought in an effort to change our gate access and bring it into more of a centralized control. Each gate access point has two cameras, one that'll take a picture of the driver, one that takes a picture of the license plate. The actual keypad entry system seemed to be functioning well enough that we are instead going to use that money towards camera upgrades and replacements so that the, the cameras themselves, both there and at strategic locations that are around the airport to view, just for security purposes, we can get a higher clarity and much better definition. Some of these things have gotten antiquated. The sun's burned them out. This will give us the ability to see much better if anything's going on. I've, I've had a couple of issues on the ramp where one of the older cameras that has since been replaced, I couldn't pick up a number that was twelve inches tall on the side of an aircraft. You know, we can do better than that. And right now, we're asking the contractor to provide us just plug and play. We got the cables, we got the fibers, everything's there. Let's just put a better camera in there. It's going to give us what we need to be able to see what's going on.
It'll also help with new cameras getting the, the infrared for nighttime getting good.
These do have a, the nighttime capability. They kick over to that low light mode. And we're also, have made some changes where a lot of them were motion sensor activated and as many as possible that we can get the, the systems behind the scenes to handle it. We're trying to go to a constant on so that we don't miss anything that maybe didn't get activated due to the motion sensors.
And I just want to highlight with the fencing repairs, you know, they go through an annual inspection every year at the airport, and they, they follow the fence line and walk around and look for those things. So these are things that we're trying to address before they become issues in that inspection.
Right, right. After the fencing, we did a drop just by five hundred dollars on the R and M for the ta, runways and taxiways. That's since we, we've got a brand-new runway. The taxiways are in pretty good shape, and as we get ten twenty-eight refurbished a little bit with repairs and sealing, hopefully, that'll be less is involved than any kind of major work there. But sometimes that gets into some of the weed control, and it also supplements any changes that we have in the lighting to make sure that the runway lights stay operational and that we get repairs on those. They will come out of warranty this year, and that will come out of our pocket to get that fixed. We dropped promotional activities totally, zeroed that out. And then in other, everything else, basically, is the same with the exception of gas and oil. Did a increase there of about nine hundred dollars so that we can, we drank a lot of fuel out there doing the mowing and running and the like. We just want to give ourselves a little bit of buffer to hopefully stay ahead of that, depending on where circumstances go.
And I just have one thing I want to highlight that I failed to mention when I was going through my initial discussion. So we discussed yesterday that there were no new positions, but there were, there were a couple of position reclassifications to some of our enterprise funds. You heard about one of them in the building department. The second one that I'm recommending is in the airport. When Jeff was initially hired, he was hired as an airport manager, and that was only to handle the airport operations. If you remember at that time, airport maintenance, that whole operation was, fell underneath my responsibilities as leisure services director at the time. And then once, over the course of the last two years, I've, you know, removed that responsibility from parks and put it completely underneath the airport. So Jeff has been doing the overseeing, the maintenance of the airport, the facilities, all of that. Obviously, we have facilities, have staff that'll come in and do some work, but the overall oversight of all of that now falls on the responsibility of Jeff, and it has for the past couple of years. And so in our discussions this year, my recommendation is to reclassify his position from airport manager to airport director. Jeff has done a phenomenal job at the airport, looking at the number of grants that we get and the, the grant dollars that we're getting on an annual basis and just looking at the projects and, and future expansion of the airport. I think it is a, a position that is well-deserved, and I apologize to him that he's, he took on the additional responsibilities without any increase in pay the last two years. But that was the discussion. I just want to be clear with you all that that is my recommendation in this budget as well.
And that's, that's shown in your, in your budget totals. That's the reason for the difference in there.
Correct, yes, sir.
Perfectly fine, and your call.
Thank you.
I do have a general question. It's not about the details, but the, the airport, the airport fund has, I don't know, at the end of, in this budget, it ends up on, and this is on schedule, it's page one ninety-five. It ends up with roughly a five hundred thousand dollar amount in, in their remaining amount in their fund. And we're, we're funding out of DST right now in our projections for capital improvements, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of matching funds out of DST. Have we thought about using the airport's funds to, for those matching funds as opposed to DST so we can redirect that DST to something outside the airport, since it is an enterprise zone?
I mean, we can look at doing that. We can go back and evaluate that and, and look at potentially removing some of those out of DST. I'd be hesitant to pull that full three hundred and twenty-five thousand out of it, just because that would take a major. I've got three twenty-five.
I may have, I may have not.
Out of capital.
Yeah.
But I'd be hesitant to take that full amount out of that. But he, you know, he does have, you know, unappropriated, around the range of four hundred and sixty-five after this fiscal year. And so we'll, you know, we'll evaluate that and, and go from there. We'll take a look at that.
I mean, we have to pay the golf, we have to pay the airport to use a piece of land out there. We have to pay them rent for our pickleball court, for example. So then we're using discretionary sales tax money to cover the matching funds on the grants. Seems to me that that's kind of a, of a circle there that, that, that we might want to consider the possibility of using some of that airport money to at least recoup the fact that we're paying them to use their land at the same time. So that's always been a pet peeve of mine.
Well, that's a good call.
We'll take a look at this and.
And come back in the future.
Not using your money for grant matching, but the fact that we have to pay to use the land, and then we have to pay to maintain it.
Right, well, we're, we're required to always seek, and we have a mandate from the federal government that we always seek fair market value for that land out there.
Right, I understand.
And, and I know it's difficult that the city's paying the city for the property, but we, we are heavily discounted in some respects.
I'm staying. I'm not, I'm not questioning that.
We don't want to raise the rent to pay the, the other side, but no, we are fortunate that we are on a very good path right now with the airport, that we're, that we're in the black. And I'd like to foresee with what we've got coming that our revenues will increase and, and make our self-sufficiency even more so. And then we're right in line with where you'd like to go then.
Yeah, so, no, I have no issue with that. I just would like to see that thought about.
Great suggestion. We will take a look at it and, and see what we can pull out of this year and, and make that adjustment in future versus this budget.
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing. Something just popped up on my phone. That's the problem with these things. It pops up when it's the wrong stop for the time.
Any, any questions or any, any, anything else for Jeff while we've got him here?
I, I think the airport's a great asset and, and just, I mean, your, your, your work has been highly appreciated. We've, we've managed to, to do a lot of things for the city, and the more revenue we can generate out there, the better off we are, and I think you're moving in the right direction on doing that. So I'm very comfortable with the airport operation. I don't know.
I, I know I am. I've been out there on multiple occasions. I've been around with Jeff. I see the operation that's happening out there, and I really like the direction we're going. We got a lot of positive feedback from the folks that I talk to about the airport, so doing a great job of holding it down.
Yeah, I think the reclassification is well-deserved.
Well, I agree with that, too.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the county thinks they only have one airport in, in the county, and so I wish they would pay more attention to what you're doing out there because got a great deal going on.
We'll fly the flag.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you all.
All right, we'll move on to human resources. Cindy coming up.
Seventy-one.
Seventy, thirty-eight.
That's exactly the same.
That's what I was saying, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Michael isn't even on, page thirty-eight.
Okay.
I just want to know if you gave away that treadmill.
The Peloton.
Peloton.
A Peloton.
Peloton, man. Peloton. Human Resources is up next.
Very nice.
Thank you, man.
See, now, why aren't the other people bringing, grabbing these bags?
She's the only one that has the luxury of having it.
Finance should have money in it.
No, I, I don't have any money.
No candy. Your friend got in all the bags.
I did that last week, by the way.
Those are stretch bands for exercising. And the other is a fire blanket.
Well, yeah, fire blanket. That's highly interesting. I actually put some of those in my cart on Amazon yesterday.
What, a fire?
Stretch bands.
Stretch bands?
Yeah, now I can take them out.
Yeah, you better get them before you order.
Yeah, it's for the health fair.
Good.
All right, so I know yesterday we, we had a lot of discuss, where we discussed, you know, where we were at with our benefits in regards to health insurance, dental, vision. That all falls underneath Cindy's purview, and she's done a, a great job with that. And you all, we'll have a presentation at the upcoming council meeting on Wednesday from Garing Group in regards to all of that. But other than that, I'll turn it over to Cindy to kind of go through her, her department and let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, well, really, not much is, not much has changed. As a whole, the budget increased by around fifty-five hundred dollars. But if you take a look at the one operating expenditure, which is the employee background testing, that doubled. And mostly because the physicals, price of physicals have gone up. The doctor that we use, we use River's Edge here in Sebastian for our physicals. And Dr. Chris really wants to be the, the medical facility for the city's employees. So she's really upgraded her office for us. So she now handles all of our drug testing, all of our random drug testing. She can do all the testing right there. If it turns out to be positive, then she sends it out. If it's negative, then she, she doesn't. She does all the testing there. If someone's in an accident, a vehicle accident, they know that that's where they have to go to be drug tested. And on the days that the office is closed, if we have a worker's comp case, someone's injured, all I have to do is call, and someone will be at that office. So she's really made herself that office available to us. In addition to that one item, is the psychological testing for the police officers. That comes out of that budget or that line item, as well as all of our background checks. Our background checks are done by a third party, and I've tried to go to the lowest price to have those done. So Janice has been doing our background checks probably for the past five years, and they do a great job. So that's what's happening there. Brian went over all the health benefits yesterday, the Blue Value Program and the new dental plan with MetLife. The benefits committee, this is their second year, and honestly, they do a really very good job. Everyone is involved. Every department is involved. They have good discussions. I walked out of the office this, or out of the meeting this year, and they picked all of the prizes for what's happening with the Blue Value Program this year. So they did a really very good job of that. The reason why we can buy prizes is because of the Blue Value Program. Florida Blue gives the city ten thousand dollars to do that. And so we use that money not just for the prizes, but also for the quarterly meetings that we hold with the employees to let them know where we stand. If we're low in adult physicals, we let them know that. If the care is pathways, we, we look at how many calls might have gone out to our employees in the care pathway section, and we're not seeing employees picking up the phone or the department's picking up the phone, we let them know that. So it's just unfortunate that we don't know who's getting called because of all the HIPAA regulations. As we had indicated, one of the big prizes is the Peloton stationary bike. And we had given one as a prize for last year. And I mean, it's really, it's really a, a good thing, those are. But we have Fitbits we give away, earbuds, all different, all different things like that we give away, anything that's kind of health-related. The health fair this year is August the fourteenth. It's from ten to two. So if you'd like to come by and see what's going on, it's out at the Public Works. During that time, we actually schedule any employee who is affiliated or has, takes Florida Blue, we schedule appointments for them. We have nurses who come in, and they do all their biometric screening, and their personal health assessments are done at that time. That's how we gain three points on our, for our percentage of increase at, at the end of the year. So, so that's done immediately on that day.
What kind of participation are you getting on that?
Oh, when we schedule an appointment, it's there, it's like ninety-five percent.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah. So we, and, and Florida Blue comes in and they'll go, you're the only company that actually does something like that. And you get, we gain our three points. So it, it's great. And I have no, the department heads are very, like PD, we just send the list over, and they actually tell us, okay, these, these officers can go at this time, and they scheduled their officers for us. So it works out very well. We have thirty-plus vendors attending the, the fair, and if you need a flu shot or any other kind of shot, they're going to be available, along with any other type of testing. We have, your orthopedics is going to be there, financial planning, a veteran, someone for the veterans. So it's a wide variety of, of vendors. Open enrollment, that's going to change a little bit this year. We're transitioning from BENTEC to ADP, who actually handles our payroll. They also, it's more of time consumed. They also, it's more of time consuming. We're always entering at various places. So we just decided, let's just do it at one time and that's through ADP. And the great thing about using ADP, at least this year, is by using the ADP platform, MetLife will credit the city 2% of our dental and vision premium and that's paid on a quarterly basis. So that also helps us. We never seem to mention our events committee and they do a great job. This year, as Brian had indicated, because we have so many people that come now to our annual awards banquet, we did have to move the venue. So unfortunately, it won't be here in Vero Beach, it will be down, or here in Sebastian, it'll be in Vero Beach. So we've been working on that contract for a while. We also have, this Friday is ice cream day for the employees. So after lunch at Public Works, there'll be an ice cream truck and at 1:00 on Friday here at City Hall, we'll be having ice cream.
1:00 on Friday? We're going to get ice cream.
Okay, Friday, 1:00.
1:00, we're having ice cream. That's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow, 1:00. Okay.
The, because the union is disbanding or we're not going to have the general union anymore, we had to write the policy and procedure manual. So I took the contract that we have and anything that was pretty much in the contract, I wrote a policy on. In addition to that, I took the policies that we hand out to the employees when someone starts. Some of those policies were like 15 years old. So I took those, updated them and put them in the manual. And right now, instead of using the little handbook that we had written that Brian had talked about yesterday, this manual is what will be used. So Brian has that to review as well as the city attorney to go through that. And that would take place, take effect October the 1st when the contract actually ends. So.
Now, is that, is that going to apply to all non-police union employees?
What happens is anything that's not covered under their union, they would, they would follow that policy. And it's written that way.
So it's city, it's citywide, but the union document does take precedence over that.
Yeah, over it.
Will you, when that thing finally goes through the process, will you give us a copy of that?
Absolutely.
I was going to say, will.
Because I actually have a copy of the old policy manual. There used to be one. I've got a book.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
And it is antiquated, 100.
And what, really, I think what Barb has done is there's a website, I believe, that we go to now where all the department, departments put their policies. So this manual will not only be there, but it will also be placed on ADP. So this is like 150 pages. So I'm not using any paper for this. This, except the directors will get a copy, but other than that, if an employee wants to look up a certain policy, they can go right into ADP and pull up that policy. We're trying to really use ADP so that the employees can pull that up, pull any, anything up.
Will that be approved internally or will that come before council?
Yeah, all of the policy stuff will be internal. If there's any major changes, which I don't anticipate at this point, we haven't, nothing majorly has come up or anything, those, we would discuss with you all, but there's nothing major that hasn't already been changed like in a union contract at some point or something of that nature. But we will share the document, the documents with you all.
Yeah. As far as positions available, we had 35 vacant positions this year. However, we hired like 40 people. And during that, during that timeframe, I mean, HR sits in on every interview. So there were approximately 160 interviews for those 35 positions. So when you think about what we, what we sit in on and listen to and help make decisions on who gets hired for the city, HR does help in that process. And we reviewed over 450 applications for those positions. The five people or applicants who didn't make it through, it could have been because this wasn't the right job for them. I mean, we had, we had one individual came and filled out all the paperwork and never came back. That's just today, what today is like. Last year, I had talked about the performance review committee and we were just in the process of writing a performance review and it was going out for testing. Well, that performance review is being used. I haven't heard one negative thing about it. We also produced what's called a PIP or a Performance Improvement Plan and that also has been used a couple of times so far this year. That way, if an employee isn't producing like they should or they can use this improvement plan to help them along to do better. Training. We've been working with the Florida League and they have courses that are online. So what we've done, and this will take place as of October the 1st, is we've put every employee's email address onto the Florida League website. And we can now look at, okay, these are maintenance workers, what kind of safety courses should they take? We can actually forward various courses to them and those are the courses that they take. Office people, there are certain, like ergonomics, those types of things, we might send just to the office people. But there's also other courses that we all have to take, such as sexual harassment. So that will go out to like everyone. So there are certain courses that we'll be looking at that will be made mandatory and we, we get reports back that say who took it and who didn't. So that's something that we're working with the Florida League with.
Are you going to be able to send that out on ADP or something, the training, saying you have X amount of training due or whatever?
We'll be able, we'll be able to either use ADP or once we get reports in from Florida League, we can send emails out to their director and say, these are the employees in your department who haven't taken classes.
Yeah, I know, it's like the space and they call it I-Learn or something, but it's the same thing, push out different people, different levels, have different training that they're required to. And then you have to, you have so much time to sign off on it, go through the training and then checked off saying that you did the training.
Yeah, it's nice and it's free.
Oh, good. I like that.
So we didn't have to, we don't have to worry about any of the cost. Employee positions and grades, I think you had mentioned this a little bit yesterday as far as with increases and things. We are changing some of the titles of employees. Sometimes a little confusion with applicants when they look at a maintenance worker title. So we are going to change them to groundskeeper if you're in parks and rec and equipment operators for public works. We'll have different levels, but the titles are changing. It gives a little bit better perspective of what that job involves.
Yeah, so you got like groundskeeper and then groundskeeper one and two or something?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do.
On those lines? Okay.
Yes. And, and they're looking, we're looking at, a groundskeeper may not have to have a CDL license because now it's costing us like $5,000 for one, like one person to go through training. I mean, it's very expensive now for us to pay for CDL licenses. City vehicles, as far as, I do take a look from a risk management standpoint as far as accidents that employees have in our vehicles. And the number kind of went up a little bit this year. So we've, I've decided we're going to have a defensive driving course. And anybody who has been involved in a small accident or any accident, they have to take the course. Our public works people in parks, they have to take, it's mandatory for them to take the course. But a lot of the directors have gone out into their departments and said, okay, let's have you take the class, you take, you know. So it's open to anybody in the city that they can come in. I've two, two times. And again, that's Florida League. It's not costing us anything. They're just, they're bringing someone in to do, perform that class.
But it also helps to reduce your insurance costs, too, right?
I'm hoping that it does.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it does and having your employees trained and have defensive driving courses, that can't hurt you. Obviously, it'll help, I believe, so.
The, the last thing I want to talk about is much what other department, department heads have been talking about and that is succession planning. We did have a leadership course where there were 23 participants. And the one thing that I've learned about those classes is we, they do a lot better when it's an in-person trainer. When it goes to what they called pods, where they may have like work to do and then they come in for discussion, but there's no trainer there. They have, they are supposed to have a lead in that team for the discussion. I'm not saying it wasn't something that was positive, but when you have someone there in person to lead you, it's so much better. And the reason why I know that is because we surveyed. We surveyed when the trainer was there, we surveyed when it was the pods. Well, I had 10 responses out of the 23 when it was in trainer and they were, they were good. You'll see those because this is part of my strategic plan. The, when it came to the pods, only three people responded. And even though they felt that that may have been positive, just because, when you only see three responses, when you have 20, you're supposed to have 23 participants, that to me is not a very good thing. So, so I've learned from that. I taught college and I know when you're in person, it's just a much better atmosphere. So this year, what, when we look at succession planning, Brian hasn't seen these yet, but I put together what's called a succession planning survey and this is going out to all the directors. And this will help them decide who, what is a critical role in their department as well as who, who could move up, who could take one of those critical roles? And are they prepared? Aren't they prepared and so on? So that's something that will be going out. I established a succession plan and this, I've listed what I think are the key positions and who, who is in those positions. What I would like to do, and a matrix and so on, but what I would like to do is establish a succession committee made up of directors. And then we actually put together a program where employees will, who they want to pick as their successor would go through the process. They may go through each department. They might spend, you know, so many days in that, in that department, but they go through finance, they go through public works, they go through HR, they go through the different departments. So they get to understand what the city's like, not just their own department, because we learn a lot from each other. And so that's what I want the committee to help with. So I've been preparing these because that's my, part of my strategic plan. And so that's really, and within my, even within my own department, I hired a new assistant. She has HR management background. She's worked for a sheriff's department. So she understands PD, she understands this side of the house as well. So we're now working on, well, what classes does she need? Because, you know, retirement for me is not all that far off.
Come on.
Yeah. So, so I'm working as far as my own succession plan within my department as well.
So you're, you're leading up to actually producing a training plan and so forth?
Yes, that's what I would like to do.
For the individuals who are identified in the succession plan?
Yes.
Okay. And you know, that goes more than one level depth, deep, right? That goes, it's not just a director succession, it's the succession for supervisors.
No, it's down. I have that, I can have those listed.
Okay, all right.
In assistant.
That's exactly what the strategic plan is, was designed to do, was to create a need to produce those kinds of things.
Right. What does it do for, that does for the department heads that may have already been in the process of whoever they believe is going to succeed them in their department? How would that affect them directly or indirectly or will it?
You know, I think Cindy brings up a very good point. You know, succession planning isn't just about your department. Because once you get to the higher levels in any department, not just the director in any department, you then have to start that communication with other departments. So I think really taking every one of those individuals that are identified and starting to introduce them, not just to the people, but the processes of everything that's involved throughout all of our departments. Because being a small municipality, you have to touch many other departments on a daily basis. You're not in a silo. You know, larger municipalities have that, you know, ability to only, you only stay in your lane and your lane only. Sebastian, we can't afford to do that and we don't do that. We work well with many departments and having an opportunity to go sit in on the finance department, the HR department, city manager's office, city attorney's office, going all the way out. If you may be of someone who works in planning and zoning here, go out with stormwater roads and have that, you know, those things that kind of give you input that you'll need whenever you get to a higher level position. Because the more you know about the entire operation of the city, the better off you'll be for your individual department.
Yeah, of course.
So I think that's a very good, good idea that, you know, she's introduced with that is to have, give them that opportunity and that freedom to move around and have them move around within other departments and see those operations.
Yeah.
So I think that that only helps anyone that's already started to identify succession planning. We just talked about it with building department and we have, you know, already identified certain individuals there, you know, that they could potentially. Now, sometimes this, it isn't always going to work. I mean, let's just be honest with that. There's going to be times that individuals are identified and that's not the end result. But at least setting them up for success as they go forward is the goal. And whether that means they get that position or not, at least we broaden their horizon and give them the opportunity.
Well, even if you send them to the training and they don't pan out, I mean, it's a benefit to the city. So I agree. I just wanted, you know, about individual department heads, because some have already been working on that. I was just wondering and now I got the answer, whether it's going to affect them indirectly or directly or not at all based on this new thing. So that's fine with me, so.
And we do have a few that we're going to be, department head wise, losing in the next couple of years. And they've made that clear to me. We've, we've had those meetings and I think every one of them is working on succession planning and what that looks like currently. Or I know they are, we've had those discussions. So I think we're going to get, starting to be in a better position with succession planning and not leaving ourselves with big holes to fill as we go forward.
Succession planning is, excuse me, it's not just identifying someone who can move up and take their boss's job. Succession planning is also career planning for the individual employees. They may never take another job in Sebastian. They may decide they don't want to, but you're, you're providing career planning for the individuals. It belongs in HR. Each individual department should be feeding data into HR and HR then can run the succession planning process through and make sure the training's scheduled, make sure it's identified. It's, it's a much bigger undertaking than just deciding who's going to replace you or which one of your employees maybe should be able to replace you.
Yeah, I have a whole, a whole individual development plan. I have a matrix. I have competencies that, that they can review for it, so.
Right, and make sure we have qualified people. I like that. I've got one other question, though. Cindy, I know earlier you said we get, you know, like 160 something applicants for 30 something jobs. Out of those 160 something, I think usually you can tell me if I'm off base or not, but some of those people that apply for those jobs are first of all, not qualified, they just apply some. They just apply sometimes, and you have to weed through that. Then you got others just applied just to say that they put in an application. Are you finding some of that in?
Oh, yeah, like we'll have we have like well over four hundred and fifty applications. When you look at our recruiting site, NeoGov, when I go in and I look at, say, a police officer, there might be eighty applicants just for the positions that we have open for a police officer or recruit. So we wade through all of those applications, and so does the police department, for example. Each department head can look at their own applications, whatever comes in for their position. And we work with them, and they tell us then after they go through their the applications as well, these are the people that we would like to interview. But I I have sat in probably on all almost ninety-five percent of that hundred and sixty, all those interviews. And then out of that, we only choose thirty-five, you know, whatever whatever we think we're going to need that we're going to hire. So usually usually you'll interview maybe four or five people for a job. Yeah, three to.
Yeah, and I do want to highlight, you know, our where we currently are vacancies. You've heard it through every department. You know, we're we don't have that many vacancies. We've got three in stormwater that we're kind of holding on to, we're freezing. You've got, I think, two in roads and three in the police department. And that's it. That's all the vacancies we have in the whole city.
I mean, our nine-one-one department, they're filled. I mean, we haven't been we haven't seen that in a long time, years, and we're filled. Yeah, it took a while, but.
Good, yep. Who knows?
So any questions for Cindy from human resources standpoint? All right, thank you, Cindy. All right, we'll move on to MIS with Barb.
MIS.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-two, I thought you were just on it.
Okay.
I got the page from your book.
Trying to get to the beginning of it.
So as Barb is coming forward, just a quick, quick highlight on this department. Proposed budget for FY twenty-six is eight hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars, which is a twenty-eight thousand dollar, nine hundred, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollar increase or three point six nine percent. You'll look at it, you'll see personnel services increased forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. That is wages and insurance cost all combined. And then you'll see operating expenses, ten thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Barb will go through that. Capital outlay is a decrease. But I'll turn it over now to Barb. She has no changes in staffing, no new positions, no reclassifications. So I'll turn it over to her to discuss capital and then operating.
Good morning, actually.
Good morning.
All right, so we're going to start with capital first. So on the capital projects, we are looking at our first project is AV equipment. We keep a fifteen thousand dollars in there. We've got to replace our aging scheduling software and Carousel that does all the slideshows and information. It is eight years old, and we've already replaced the hard drives once, and we no longer can get support for it. So we do have to replace that. For citywide computers, this is the annual budget of what we could spend on trying to keep our computers in rotation, keep them up to up to date. We have budgeted, we have also taken on replacing the road patrol laptops. When they get new cars, instead of putting them with the cars, they are coming out of this line item, hence the increase that you're seeing throughout because we're actually taking over the cost of the city, those computers, and severing them into the cars. And we we make an evaluation and buy the computers in bulk to make sure that we try to keep that rotation going. We are right now on a seven-year rotation on desktops and laptops when possible.
Seven year?
Seven years.
That's good. That's good that you could manage to get them for last that long.
No, mine's five, right? I think three to five, right?
We are pushing the limits of what we can do with the we've gone through over the years and replaced all the aging hard drives with solid states. We've made a commitment to make sure that when we buy desktops, we buy ones that we might be able to get parts for it. If not, we make sure that they have the five-year warranty if they're specialized machines and try to keep them mostly standardized. So if a machine fails, we have another one to put in its place. For network infrastructure, this project focuses on the annual replacement of the switches to keep improving our infrastructure and replace the devices that fail or age out. This does not include some of the more specialized equipment, and you'll notice later in the CIP. But it covers all the connections for the airport and the police department and all the city infra- infrastructure. So that is a constant evolving project. Outdoor security, security updates. We spend, we work with the police department and the parks to provide coverage out at the parks to improve public safety. We do highlight parks that have ongoing issues or where we need to watch them a little more frequently. They we have to put entire infrastructure out there, which means internet and all of that hardware out there. And therefore, we do shoot for at least three parks a year. We try to cover more.
So you're talking about actually actually placing a network into a park and then putting cameras attached to it, and then then bring that into the city's system? So you're able to, in real time, they're able to look at the look at the cameras or whatever?
That's correct. So they.
And do we have that in most of our parks now?
We have it.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't want to give too many details on where the cameras are located, but we do have them located in, I think, right now, currently.
We got them in most of the major parks.
I think seven or eight of the major ones.
My question is really more simple than that. It's this thirty thousand dollars a year, is that is that a anticipated replacement cost for aged equipment? Or is that installing new?
New.
New. And we also have a couple. We have a couple cameras that are coming up on end of life. So they've as they they've hit their their life, and they're going to need additional warranty or replacement. I'll let you know which ones those are, but they 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 no. No, 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 no. But those are also part of that project because it will be a replacement at that point because it's cheaper to replace the camera than to buy the additional licenses at that point.
So this doesn't include anything related to this campus and so forth? Just just for the parks area and and some of that?
Correct. It will include like Friendship Park, we'll be getting some. But, you know, when you look at our boat ramps, our sports complex, pickleball, Schuman, all of those have cameras, and and we will be increasing in a few of those locations. But I know that, just to highlight one, we have one on our website right now that if you want to look at Rearview Park overlooking the twin piers at the water view, we do showcase that camera and also the pickleball camera. Those two locations are visible for the public to see, so.
And you know, making the making the boat ramp cameras visible might be a good idea because if you're a boater and you want to go out and see what the traffic's like or whatever, that could be a good idea, too. So, I mean, I.
It's great entertainment, too.
Yeah. Well, Rearview Park's kind of boring without something going on in there, but. It's a sign of the times. It's terrible to think we have to spend thirty thousand dollars a year so people can watch park, what goes on in parks, but you have to do it, so.
It's also helping ensure public safety because it only takes one bad apple to ruin the rest of the fun for everybody else.
Yeah, and I'll say that just I'll use an example. It's known that the cameras are there. We're a creative playground. You know, we've had some lawsuits that have come out of that playground in the past. So as a response to that, we installed cameras that we can see all the way around that playground and exactly what happens when someone gets injured. Also, we've had a lot of vandalism, we've had issues there. So we've been able to track, you know, individuals that, you know, started a fire at the skate park. And then we could kind of track on them on camera and see when they were out there and different things like that. So there's a lot of things that we've been able to do in in our strategically placed cameras that.
Missing persons.
There you go, correct, so.
All right, so next item is a campus security program. And what we're doing here at City Hall and at the police department is our security infrastructure is over twenty years old. The cameras and other infrastructure is to the point of failure, and I can't find parts.
So it's in interior and exterior?
That is correct.
Okay.
The first part of City Hall is in progress. We had budgeted as part of this current fiscal year. But that did not include any of the interior infrastructure because we had to prioritize where it needed to go. So as part of this next year, we're going to finish out City Hall, and we're also going to work on what we can over at the police department in order to upgrade their infrastructure because it is at the same age as City Hall. The final year is to finish the airport because they are also the admin building has also the same aging infrastructure that will need to be replaced. The next item, the core security stuff, is pushed out a number of years because we just did the the upgrades last year. And that's why you'll see it's pushed out a number of years. Just making sure that we are covering our budget in the future. And the same way for all of the other projects. We are missing. Okay. Right, on to operating.
Well, she's getting that ready, Brian. So everybody else is pretty much like six point two, six point three percent. She's at three point nine percent.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you'll you'll see kind of the operating budget doesn't doesn't go up, you know, that much. I mean, I think it's only like a ten percent increase with operating or a ten thousand dollar increase in operating. And, you know, that was our goal, trying to see all the reductions and everything.
Yeah, the only thing that's got any major increase is dues and memberships, and that's not that's just happening, you know, so.
Laserfish is a major contributor to our our cost updates along with an ARC GIS update. In order to facilitate the police department's initiative to do a little bit more crime analysis and stuff, we are having to make a major investment into our ArcGIS implementation and is requiring a twelve thousand dollar increase to the ArcGIS program, which is almost the entire increase in the dues and memberships. In order to counter that, MIS has cut a couple programs that I'm going to work on finding alternative methods to to deal with in order to make that a little bit more palatable to be able to handle. Internet access is continuing to go up. We are going to be acquiring some Starlink connections as we, well, we need them for emergency management because we're hoping that they will work during a storm when our rest of our internet may not. And plus, we need a backup connection for the public works compound because we do not have one currently. R and M is staying about the same. We're managing that by going through and strategically looking at all the current maintenance projects that we have and doing what we can to minimize what's there and to absorb some of the costs of the increases that we're seeing. Laserfish is in that line item, and Laserfish has already let us know that there is a five percent increase this year. Small dues and memberships are, small tools and equipment is also going up because we are going to try to clean up MIS a little bit by improving some of the we're replacing the carpet in one of our rooms that is absolutely horrible and needs to be done. But it is a very small space, and it's not going to cost that much to do. We are, I need to ask him. Sorry, had to verify that the number number was correct. You'll notice computer supplies went down from what we originally had to what is there now is because we've actually shifted some stuff to memberships and dues like it's supposed to be instead of being in computer supplies. My I do want to note that that number is the entire city's computer supplies. That's all the little miscellaneous stuff. So UPSes, keyboards, mice, all of it.
Cables, whatever.
We we are going to do our darndest to try to keep. When we order computers, we make sure that we get keyboards, monitors, mice, and they're under warranty. Monitors as well, we try to replace their monitors at that time. So they should last a lifetime of the machine unless something has happened. I know, is the those monitors are on a definite. The community development made a specific request and a specific needs case for those.
I know, but what you see, I mean, you just want one.
I know, but they are very expensive, and it's one of the reasons why my computer, my citywide computer budget is very tight this year because of unplanned expenditures. So we're trying to get a better handle on that for this next fiscal year.
It'd be cheaper to buy a seventy-inch TV and just put it up there on the probably.
Yeah, it probably would be.
Because you can get one of those for seven hundred bucks now.
It's Barb's nice way of saying she got cut.
Yeah, I know.
Yes. Well, I'm out to make sure that the city can run the way it needs to, and it just means that I got to say no a little more often. That's just part of the way to make the city city fiscally responsible and to take care of our staff like we need to.
Any questions on MIS?
These guys do a great job in in, you know, I keep wondering how they can survive in those little cubbyholes that they're working out of, but they managed to do it. So and I guess they just like it, you know.
I was going to say, IT people like to be in small cubbyholes away from everybody else.
IT people love small cubbyholes.
Well, that's Chris. She's got that look like, no, my guys would want to have a bigger space.
We we are lacking, it's like space, but we make it work. There's not a lot of places to keep the team together in the city. In order to find more space, we would have to break up and compartmentalize a little bit more than we all decided that we wanted to be.
Wayne said he was doing away with all those physical copies of plans and stuff. Maybe that big room down there, they used to store that in.
I think between the building department, community development, they need a little bit more space.
They've got plans for that.
So we're just working on trying to utilize our space a little more efficiently. That's why you're seeing a little more chaos in MIS with stuff coming and going because we're trying to be a lot more efficient about it. We're also working on making plans to revitalize some of our existing infrastructure to reutilize it in other ways in order to try to cut costs because server and that the servers and that type of infrastructure are very expensive. And and that's just another way that we're trying to be fiscally responsible.
Have you looked at AI packages? There's a lot of companies now that are coming out with with AI. Uh, there's a lot of companies now that are coming out with, with, um, AI packages designed primarily to support municipal governments and so forth, um, that, where they, they package AI concepts in with the overall governing, overall software from municipalities.
I am not opposed to AI. In fact, I already have a policy written and waiting for my final training to be completed. Once the final training is completed, um, it'll be available to review.
Okay.
Um, it's basically going as long as you sit through my training and, uh, you follow my guidelines on what you can and can't do because I have to spell it out for the police department. Don't use it in reports and that sort of stuff and what's appropriate use of it. I don't have a problem with it.
My, my biggest concern is what that could do to your server sizes and your requirements for server space and so forth if, if people begin to migrate stuff into AI.
Well, since we don't host the large language models here and, um, a lot of our software is either cloud-based or it's individual and we're moving away from a software on a server as a model.
Okay.
I'm not seeing it as a big of a need as it's going to be a draw on my internet connection. But, uh, I, as part of the balancing of my budget this year, um, I did not put in for an increase of the bandwidth because once I got those prices back, I determined we can make it another year. Um, but it's just being strategic on what we're doing and planning for the future. And as I said, I'm not opposed to it. I've already got a policy ready. I'm just waiting for my training, uh, to be completed and I've got, uh, my staff working on that. And I'm hoping to have that done soon. So, as I said, I, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, I can see services like Laserfish, for example, starting to introduce AI search facilities and those things. And so...
Laserfish is on its own hardware.
Yeah.
So, um, and it has plenty of, uh, processing power and room to grow for many years to come.
Okay.
Our biggest limitation right now is we are at our max licenses. And, uh, we will be there for another year because I did not budget for more licenses. So we just gotta be strategic about it. It's use.
Yeah. I've been, I've been denied access a couple of times on Laserfish, but you just have to wait 30 minutes and go back in and, and somebody else has signed off and you can get in. So...
The public has, uh, really started to, uh, utilize it a lot more. So our 25 users in Web Link is getting, uh, utilized a lot more, but they are turning over very quickly.
Is the, uh, introduction of Clearwave, uh, to the area gonna offer any options for internet access for the, for the city?
We haven't inquired at this time.
Okay. I mean, they are going right in front of the building. So I know they offer a Clearwave business as well. I've just, I mean, they're here. So if they're...
Are they actually going out in the public area right now?
Oh, yeah.
Came right down.
Yeah, they're, they're right down the road because that's where they cut the AT&amp;T fiber. It was right over there.
Yeah. But I mean, are they in the neighborhoods?
Yeah. I mean, this neighborhood, they're all, they're all down here down Main Street and then going down EZ and Clemming and...
But I mean, if AT&amp;T doesn't have fiber into, into like my neighborhoods, I can't.
And, and Clearwave honestly chose the neighborhoods that AT&amp;T's not in. So if you don't have AT&amp;T in your neighborhood, they're probably on the Clearwave, uh, map. My install will be December, like 19th for my house at my... So I, I, it's just, it's an option. I mean, fiber's fiber for the most part as long as the reliability is there and they...
And they have the SLA, which I have to add.
Correct.
My neighbor, my area has AT&amp;T fiber underground.
I'm, I'm stuck with Comcast right now or, or T-Mobile.
I mean, we've, uh, uh, in that discussion, just a quick one, we're getting inquiries from many fiber companies almost weekly, um, saying we've got multiple ones right now doing work in the city. I think there's four of them, four fiber companies currently in the city working right now.
But I like the idea of Starlink because when we have the storm season, I mean, when the storms come, that's gonna be very important. Are, are we close to that after this storm season? Are we looking out for a possibility?
I have access to, uh, Starlink currently, um, through other means. So the city has something for that, for that inevitable case. Uh, we're on a list trying to get the information from the state because of state contract and the restrictions that we have to have. We are having to go through an extended process that Jessica in procurement has been helping me with greatly.
You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
We're gonna take lunch.
All right. So, yeah, so we're gonna take a break for lunch, um, and we'll come back. Do you want to come back at 12:45 or 1 o'clock? It's 11:45.
12:30?
12:30.
And we can do that?
Okay. Yep. I'll get, and we'll come back at 12:30 with finance.
Yeah.
All right, welcome back. So we'll go now into the finance department budget. Just to highlight the the proposed budget for them for this fiscal year for the finance department is nine hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars. It's an increase of one hundred and seventy nine two oh three. And I know we've discussed this in numerous departments and I just want to go ahead and highlight it again here. Sorry, page thirty one is where I'm at, sorry. In multiple departments, we've discussed this about the difference in salaries and personnel services. So remember, we brought Mr. Stewart on as the chief financial officer. I think he's been here now since close to beginning of the of the calendar year. So there would have been that that projected expenditure without that without that salary being shown. And Ken was still part time with us, but he had very few hours during that period of beginning the fiscal year and everything. So that is equating into this difference quite a bit because it would have been that large chief financial officer salary that was not being compensated until we brought Mr. Stewart on board. So I just want to go ahead and highlight that and bring that to your attention. And then in operating expenses, we're showing an increase of fifty four thousand four hundred and thirty two dollars. But with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. So also in addition on personnel, we also filled a vacant position. So that was the what was the name of that finance assistant?
Yeah, finance assistant.
So we did have that position filled, so.
Yeah, so that position would have been the financial assistant, which had been a new position that we had done, I think, two years ago and had not filled it until it was filled this past fiscal year. So that salary would have also been on hold. And then the person that was hired for that position was Liz from human resources. So she then was kind of working in human resources until we got the until we were able to fill that position. So that's where the, you know, large difference in this salary is just for clarification, would have been in the chief financial officer and the financial assistant not being filled.
Correct. So that makes most of our difference up in the finance department. Personnel services, one hundred and twenty four thousand up. We also had a few other items that we added in this one in operating. We we contracted with ADP for a few additional services that kind of overlapped into HR. But since we were already paying ADP, you know, as a payroll out of finance, we went ahead and took on those services such as the the onboarding of employees when they choose their benefits, that system, you know, we added on. And there was another component ADP had of being able to survey and poll employees through their system since they had all the data. So we we added those services. Also in this budget is our new procurement software. Our procurement officer is was wanting to upgrade to a more integrated and interactive software. So we're looking at several different ones, OpenGov, EUNA, among others. But she's currently holding off because we were also looking at, you know, once I got on board, I wanted to take a look at some some budgeting software to help us. The budgeting process currently is is a manual process. And everything is done like they do it in a spreadsheet, it's sent out to the directors and you have meetings. The spreadsheets are then sent back and Jen coordinates and manually pulls in all the data from the spreadsheets and then manually generates more reports to send out back out and and to the city manager. And the the current budget book, as you know, is is a collection of all these spreadsheets compiled together and then sent to the printer and and printed. So there's budgeting software out there. And I've given you a a little handout here of several different items that I had on my wish list that didn't get added into this budget. But Brian didn't mention if I had any wishlist items to mention them, so.
Is all the stuff he said no to?
Yes. Well, I didn't get it in time for the original, so.
But I want to clarify that. It's not all the stuff I said no to.
No, no, no. There was a lot. There was chairs and desks and things like that, too. But so in your little packet here, you'll see in one of them past past the Tyler things, the the OpenGov that I made you a copy of. And this, we're currently looking at OpenGov not only for procurement, but the code enforcement is already going to contract with them, I believe, or trying to contract with them for the permitting permitting and license portion. Is there was there anyone else trying to use OpenGov?
You know, not at this current time. It was really finance department and code enforcement that were looking.
So so they also.
Permitting licenses with really in the code enforcement or building department?
They have a code enforcement section underneath that permitting and licensing. It could also be the building department. There's my Gov currently in the building department and not interested in making that change as of now. But yes, under permitting and under OpenGov's permitting, they have a code enforcement module.
Is that is that different than what the chief was talking about there?
No, no. So so they're currently evaluating different ones. Obviously, we'll have to go through the procurement process if it gets approved in the budget. But they one of the main ones they've evaluated already is OpenGov. And it's one of the ones that kind of reached the top of their list. So I know they had shared that information with with Brian in a department head meeting that they had that was high on their list for consideration. Obviously, we still have to follow the procurement process and no decisions have been made, but it was on their list.
So there could be opportunities to cross the balance between the departments for the police department and for finance.
Yeah, so I think one of the things Brian has mentioned was was going to mention was that, you know, the more we kind of package together, the better price is going to be. And if, you know, with procurement, you know, looking at that module that we had looked at, that module was twenty two thousand for the procurement. That includes the fourteen thousand nine hundred of an implementation fee. So just wanted to highlight that. So obviously, on on the annual, and I got the number right here, on the annual, that's only about eight thousand dollars for that for that software. So once you start to kind of put some of these things together, I know they had talked about giving somewhere in the range of a thirty five percent or or thirty percent.
Thirty five.
Well, there are there are advantages to the enterprise to use a single platform with the components as opposed to have one software company provide here and one here and one here and one here. If it's if something like OpenGov provides things that fit multiple departments, there are advantages to the using it for those multiple departments.
That's correct. And that's that's why we're looking at it. And we're not decided on anything right now. We have a few demos coming up for OpenGov and another platform called EUNA, E U N A. And they they both offer the budget option, online budget book and procurement. And I've talked to Jessica with procurement and she likes both of their platforms. So we're primarily focusing on that. But I was just showing you like OpenGov today. And I asked her to hold off on on going with anyone until we make a decision on with everyone and hopefully get on the same platform.
Budget for doing this.
Right, except procurement. Procurement's already in the budget for this. And but it's just the budgeting part. And the budgeting part with with implementation and the annual cost, you're looking at between forty and sixty thousand for the first year. Ongoing cost is between twenty and thirty thousand a year. And what what the budgeting platform basically does is it provides one place for everyone to come for everything budgeting. So we can we can send out requests for the departments for the performance management, the operating budget, the capital budget, the workforce planning, which is your personnel, so they can do all the requests for personnel and things through there. And and then the the final product would be an online budget book. And I've implemented this before with another company. I didn't particularly love this company that that had implemented before. But the the product itself is, you know, a good product to have. It it makes everything more seamless. It it takes a load of work off of the finance department as far as having to compile all of those spreadsheets. It will give you an on demand budget book where when we plug something in, it goes through whether we need to set up department approvals or whatever. So you can also in this tool coordinate with your with your strategic plan and you can tie budget initiatives to specific strategic plans within this software. So it's got a lot of tools that I'm I'm not even fully explored. But but I know that it's a really good tool. A lot of governments are going to this. They also comply already with the GFOA award. They also comply already with the GFOA award program. So if you build their online budget book. And you can go into a lot of different governments and they'll have either, maybe they went with OpenGov or ClearGov is another one, and, or EUNA, like the city of Tampa, Largo, just to name some off the top of my head. And they will have these online budget books. And they're dynamic. You could, you know, just place your mouse over a certain portion and then it will highlight, you know, different things about it. So if you want to take time, I could certainly give you their, they sent me references and different websites you can go to.
Does that give you the flexibility, like for example, the budget advisory review? They may have things that's not shown on some of the documents that they'd like to see. Or Ed has certain things that he'd like to see that's not presented. Does it give you the flexibility to pull out those certain things and highlight and say, hey, here's what they're asking for?
It gives you a lot of flexibility as far as how much information do you want to see? You can get online and you can scroll down and you can go to these websites. And you could, you could click on different areas that you want to focus on and then you can drill down. So it's got drill down capabilities. I know that like EUNA has, for their capital budgeting, they have a map set up, like a map of your city. And there's little highlight spots and you can hover over those spots to see what that is. You can click on them to drill down into the detail of what that capital project is. So it's very dynamic.
I'm glad you said it because that's exactly what I was referring to, is drilling down to specific areas that someone might want to see. This software allows you to do that.
That's exactly what it does.
Okay.
So a question. You talked about implementation costs. So if we, just for sake of discussion, just say we implemented this side of procurement for OpenGov and we decided we wanted to add another module down the road, do we have to pay that implementation cost again? Or is it kind of just adding a module is cheaper?
Yeah, so if you bundle and do them all together, right now they're offering the thirty-five percent discount if we go with code and procurement and budget. I don't know that they would stick to that if we pull and pick out.
Did it in phases.
But the implementation cost is going to be for each individual component. The budget, you get all the budget parts, the budget book, the performance, the financial. But they got to implement it all at one time. The procurement is a different implementation. So it's got its own implementation.
The implementation is primarily pulling your data into the system initially.
And getting it set up.
It's not, I mean, the software goes on the system, it's on it. But they've got to, they've got to set it up and bring your data in so it's populated.
That's right. And, you know, it not only includes, like the procurement would include, you know, being able to go out and get bids and things like that, but it also includes contract management, being able to dynamically know when a contract is going to come up, the software will know. Things like that that just, that just brings us up to more to date with technology.
And is the other side of that tracking actual, your actual financial accounts against the budget? So you can see from a budget of dollars what's being allocated and spent and so forth?
Yeah, currently, OpenGov does talk to Tyler. And there's not a lot out there because Tyler's not an open API platform, it's closed. But they have got the link in to be able to dynamically get information from Tyler. EUNA also does. And that's why we're, another reason why we're looking at those too.
Now Brian, we could do this off budget if at some time after we get through this process, it's decided to bring this forward to council.
Correct. And I'll start this off by saying, one of the thing from the budget is in discussions between myself and I made a point yesterday at the very beginning to talk, to recognize Jen Smith. She's the one that is putting all this together. And I can tell you that it is a very tedious process to go from Excel sheet to Excel sheet to Excel sheet, back and forth, word documents, and it's all over the place. And I've even challenged them, and I did this yesterday or the day before with Jen, I said, next year I want to speed this process up because I don't want to be caught the week before we're setting a trim, having a budget workshop. So I've challenged them to let's have this meeting sometime the first or second week of June, which now speeds this whole process up by four to six weeks. That's hard to do because we already start this process at the beginning of February. So capital items, that whole thing starts the end of January, beginning of February. So in order to do that, we've got to figure out a way to be more efficient and be able to better put it all together. Like I said, currently, we literally go into our meetings, we mark up these documents here and then she has to go back and transfer everything back into these Excel spreadsheets that are not populated at that time in one whole document. They're populated by individual departments that you have to go through. Once the booklet you see is her taking and literally basically printing it all out, putting it together, getting it to MIS, and then they put the booklet in one format for this. So, you know, that's my, one of the things that I'm looking at. And like I said, Brian, he was working, going through this. A lot of these things were decided, you know, before he had any of these numbers. But I think it's something that we should start to consider. It might be a really, it's a really tough budget year to really consider too many new things. Code enforcement is a strategic initiative. So we are moving forward with that. The procurement module that's shown in here right now, it's probably worth us having a discussion as to, you know, between procurement and budgeting. Maybe, you know, budgeting's obviously a little bit more expensive, but what's really going to be our biggest bang for our buck? Or can we somehow get them both together? If we can get thirty-five percent off, then that might be a better number for us to be able to swallow. But we can do it now, we can do it later. I would say if we're going to do anything though, we have to make decisions and it has to be in place shortly after October first because it's going to take an implementation plan for them to start to get this data together for January, February timeframe, in my opinion. But it's something that I think from Brian's perspective and myself, as we've heard, hear the discussions that have taken place here, well, I'm going to go back and there's going to be changes, you know, in this document based on input I've received already. So there's things that we can continue to look at.
I think it's a no-brainer to do it personally. I mean, part of our strategic plan is also efficiencies and becoming so forth, and it fits in the strategic plan. The question is, do we add an additional sixty, ninety thousand dollars to this budget anticipating that? Or do we do it off-budget after, you know, as opposed to doing it within the budget? I would not be opposed, I mean, we're going to have to make some heavy financial decisions anyway within the next six weeks. I would not be opposed to actually adding that as a budget item during this budget cycle and having just make that decision to move forward. The savings in staff time to get away from these spreadsheets is probably worth the cost, or close to worth the cost.
I mean, I can tell you, when I get here in the morning, Jen's car's in the parking lot and everybody else is gone and her car's in the parking lot. If there's anyone. And that is strictly, a lot of it's budget. I mean, she has other tasks, but this time of year's budget.
So if we're talking about budget, I would, I would propose that we add to this budget the cost of moving forward. And I'm not saying which software package, but the cost of moving forward with a software package to do budgeting, to do purchasing and to do code enforcement. If we can do that with a single company, great.
So from an IT guy's point of view, I'm blown away that you're still using Excel spreadsheets. So please put that in the budget, in my opinion, to get that done. That's, first of all, Excel spreadsheets corrupt, they cause issues. That's just, that's a nightmare. And we shouldn't be running off of Excel spreadsheets for that type of thing. If we have software available, in my opinion, all the things we've talked about, there's probably not a better item to add to the budget than that.
Yeah, the time saving, the efficiency, it's a no-brainer, sounds to.
A single updatable application. I mean, that's, why not? Liz can't be our, she can't be our single updatable application person. You know, she's doing it all together, what an application would do all by itself.
What that does, that may create some inefficiency, some things in there because of all of that work. And with this new program, it would take out a lot of that stuff. So you got one person trying to do all that stuff. It's just, we're just asking for something else to happen. So it's just.
Yeah, I would like to see you seriously, seriously consider putting that in the budget and getting that done.
Well, even if it's after this year, I mean, in October.
I can tell you, I mean, you guys, we've already talked throughout this whole budget, I'm not. We would do what's best for the city and we'll figure it out between the two of us on which approach we take and see what our options are. But I've heard you, I just want to be clear on that.
Yep. Do you?
And I agree, we can, we can do it this way for as long as you guys want. It does cost more money to do it the other way. But it's my job to present to you the different options that are available and the efficiencies.
See, I would argue what you just said, that it costs more to do it this way. Because if you add demand hours alone, put into doing it the other way, in the end, you might be awash on money, but in a much better situation.
I agree, I agree. And in that light, there was a few items from Tyler that I saw that the finance department really needed to look at. They have a reporting service, which would cost with the first year with implementation and everything would be about seventy-two hundred dollars. Right now, the reporting is difficult to pull data the way I want it and get it into some usable reports. Like the commission report takes me, took me days to get that first quarter report because I had to pull the data into Excel and then pull the Excel data like I want it, you know, for you guys. So that's one option I would look at, like to look at. And they also have something called a content manager. And you've got a whole little item here, a packet on the content manager. And basically what it is, is it brings all the documents we have into one place. And it OCRs, you know, the character recognition, so you can search any of these documents and it relates them all. Such as you've got a PO that's issued and you've got an invoice on that PO and then you've got a check written for that PO. You can go to content manager, search for one word or a few words or phrase of what you're looking for and it'll bring you all of those documents into one place. I've used this in a previous place and it is probably the best feature Tyler has, in my opinion.
Is this a records management function or is it a workflow?
It kind of is for the financial system itself.
Okay, so it's a workflow function, yeah.
It'll incorporate everything Tyler has, it'll bring it together. And this, this document goes into kind of some of it that it does. And this, this you'll sort of see on page three, what it looks like. And then over there to the left column is like the list of all the documents that are related to the one document you're looking at. So if you're looking at an application here, a contract or an invoice, you can pull in. And all the related documents are over here to the side. It ties itself in. So it would really, really help.
But this doesn't replace our records management function?
No, no, no. This, this.
Those documents still go through records management, Laserfish, all that kind of stuff.
That's upstairs, that's different. This is just the financial.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yeah, this is just for Tyler.
Okay.
So that's, that's a big feature. And it would cost first year with implementation, ten thousand five eighty. And there's one more, the first sheet is called the PACE program. And that's where, and Jen had been talking and looking into this, getting Tyler to come in and see if we're utilizing everything we're paying for, number one, to Tyler. And if we're utilizing it in the most efficient and best manner. So there's, there's, there's very few places I've seen that actually utilize, fully utilize their software that they're paying for. And so this is a program that will not only come in, look at everything that we're doing with software and even outside of their software and see if there's opportunities to bring things into this one software. So that's one piece of this. They also provide a certain number of hours of live training. And, you know, they, they give you a pass to their annual conference, which is, some of that training has actually been built into the budget already to be able to go to that conference. So there's a lot of different things in this little program and it would cost about ninety-three hundred the first year. And it's a three-year contract, but they said you can cancel anytime you want, anything like that. So these are the four things that I've noticed that would really bring the finance department forward, in my opinion. It doesn't have to be done today.
I will add, Tyler also integrates with Laserfish for the document management side of it as well. So.
And see, that's something that they would come and look at in detail of what we're doing everywhere and see what efficiencies could be made. So. That is pretty much all I have on the finance department budget.
Any questions on the budget from the finance department?
Well, I mean, there's train education, that you're talking about their conference there where you've got money in to do that and so forth.
We did put money in because a few months ago, they had their conference and I saw the list of everything they have at their conference. And I'm like, ooh, it would benefit everyone to go to this conference because it's utilizing the software in the best way. So we put a little in there for at least one or maybe two of us to go.
And you've got some money in traveling per diem to cover that.
Yep.
So I think you're pretty well covered there.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say this, you know, Ken didn't travel, didn't go to conferences. And I think it's something that's really important, I think, you know, especially with technological advances and trying to, you know, learn and see how things are done and getting those credits and those continuing education units, it's important. So I did support Brian's request for increases.
Also have a CPA license. I have to get eighty hours every two years from somewhere.
Any other questions on finance before we go into kind of the closure discussion? All right, so we will, and I've taken a bunch of notes in regards to what were, what discussions have happened at the table as we've gone through this budget. As we discussed yesterday, I'm going to have Brian discuss the retirement option with you all a little bit more in detail. He and I met yesterday after the meetings and he was able to pull some data together. And then we'll close the discussion out with a discussion on the military and kind of some of the options that were shown. I do want to clarify, we gave you a spreadsheet today or just recently, your initial spreadsheet yesterday that showed you the military rate options had this information. However, the dollar amounts were in relation to the rollback rate. So this here shows you the increase/decrease in general fund reserves, which is what will ultimately cover or not cover what's currently proposed in the budget. So that's, this is the document that we need to be kind of looking at. And we'll go further into detail on that one once Brian completes the retirement discussion.
So we talked a little bit the other day, yesterday, about the retirement options. Did we, oh yeah, let me give you these guys. Got some handouts for you.
Thank you.
Good lord, is this small enough? I was kidding.
Sorry about that. This is actually an extremely large spreadsheet with all employees and all of their data that the actuary did.
Glad you didn't give us that.
This is a screenshot of condensed version.
And once you buy this system, you won't have to have this big spreadsheet, will you?
This is actually the actuary spreadsheet. This is the study he did for us to determine how much a new retirement system would cost.
Oh.
So let me start by saying, I did research FRS. I did research doing our own with independently with, like the police department does with Foster and Foster or another independent agency. And I looked at doing it with the Florida League of Cities. And the Florida League of Cities was just so much, had so much better options and lower cost administratively that it was almost a no-brainer. The only benefit with FRS would be transferability. Other than that, you can build your own plan that's much better than what FRS offers. Currently, in the state, there are four hundred and eighty-nine different independent plans. Some may be independent with Foster and Foster, some may be independent with Florida League of Cities. But there are four hundred and eighty-nine, that's not four hundred and eighty-nine cities necessarily, but it's four hundred and eighty-nine cities or district plans. So they might have a separate plan for general, fire, police. So that's how many there are looking at in the state. So it's very popular to have your own plan. Now this study and the sheet you have shows what the actuary came up with based on our parameters that we gave him. And these parameters are all negotiable. You can pretty much set up the plan any way you want. However, we had to start somewhere. So we chose a plan and sort of mirrored it and brought it over here, tweaked it like we thought, you know, and I had discussions with Mr. Benton about the parameters we wanted to set. So if you see in the top left corner, his notes on how this is set up, these are the assumptions. His benefit formula is based on a three-year final average pay of the base pay only. So, and determining a retirement amount for an employee and actuary. So and and determining a retirement amount for an employee and actuary, it goes by the plan document. And the plan, all plans are based on the number of years of credited service times the. The average pay, whether it's over three years or five years, is is normal, times a factor. And this would determine normally your monthly benefit. So this factor is what really differs in most plans. So like, uh, F R S factor is one point six. So you take the average pay, years of credited service. Times this one point six, that's what you will earn per month with F R S. So if you look at the current employee's C W A plan, they have restructured that plan down to where their factor is one. So it's much less less than F R S. But they also have zero contribution. With F R S, you have a three percent contribution. So just to get that out of the way, back to looking at this plan, the assumptions, normal retirement age. Fifty-five with twenty-five years of service and sixty with at least five years of service, would that would mean a five-year vesting period. Early retirement at fifty-five with five years of service, which would be no cost basically because it's actuarially reduced. From your normal retirement age. The normal form of payment, a ten-year certain and life annuity, there is different options in the different plans I've seen. Some are just the life annuity. Some are five-year certain and some ten-year certain. Some plans get into see even some more options with with spouse options and and lump sum payouts. The the actuary did discourage lump sum payouts because it it tends to cost the plan more than it should sometimes. So you have all those options. A pre-retirement death benefit, ten-year certain, annuity payable at normal retirement age. Then you have the hundred percent vesting at five years, like I mentioned. There's in this plan, we didn't put in any disability benefit or automatic colas. Normally, the cola, automatic colas would cost a good bit. Like your, I think your current police plan currently has like a one percent automatic cola. So.
I believe it's one percent.
And. Uh, he displayed it as a percentage of payroll, the cost is a percentage of your payroll, so. Just looking at this. What we what we see in the in the box that's listed with contribution and factor. This is a variable contribution rate. So we thought with our class of classes of employees, we have a lot of young employees. And then we also have a class of older employees and, you know, those two different classes generally want different things out of the retirement plan. And so we created this sliding scale of what they can contribute. So if they choose to contribute zero percent like they're currently doing, then we said they could have a factor of one, which is currently what they have. And they're contributing zero percent. So it sort of mirrors their current C W A plan.
And let me just jump in right here. That was not a consideration until we had our discussion on Tuesday. You know, one of the things, if if we ultimately decide to go this route, in an effort to. We all know that employees should contribute to get a higher factor. However, there's gonna be plenty of employees that say, well, I was getting nine percent and wasn't contributing anything in the past to the C W A and they had a one factor. So in an effort, if someone wants to continue that route and understand that your one year equates to one factor. And we would go through that discussion with them, then we would still have that option. And so people can have that option to not contribute to their retirement based on this sliding scale that we have here. And then I'll let Brian continue to discuss the sliding scale, but we did discuss with them, there's no real mechanism on on. You know, the sliding scale just has different factors as it goes through the process.
So you're giving the employee the option of staying with their current plan. And I don't mean staying with a plan, I'm talking about this.
Yes.
Staying with the current.
Factor.
Factor, okay. Or. Or improving their plan with a contribution.
Correct.
I think that's a good way to do it.
You basically have.
Because, I mean, you're your choice, okay? You wanna stay with your current. I I I'll say plan because, but I'm not talking about with a current company, I'm talking about whether with your your you're contributing nothing, you're gonna get a one-year. You're gonna get a factor of one, you're gonna get, you know, five years of service, boom, multiplied by one, that's how much you get. Okay, or you can contribute and get a larger one. I think that's a perfectly good way to go about doing it.
Yeah, so this is basically eleven different plans right here you can choose from. You know, you you get to choose your factor and how much you wanna contribute.
Is this a one-time choice? You choose this when you get into it or is it?
We 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 haven't decided and defined that yet. We did talk about it with the actuary. If at some point in the future, you do decide to go with a higher rate, then my my. My suggestion was let's actuarial, actuarially make them pay the way up to to that rate. Currently, in another.
That's that's I think that's probably a good way to do it, because you can't, you can't all of a sudden decide, well, gosh, I want a factor of two point two and I'm two years from retirement. So I'm gonna change my number for the next two years and get two point two.
Exactly.
Doesn't work that way.
There are plans that do that and what they do is the actuary just calculates the first, you know, twenty years at the rate you were paying it.
Yeah.
And then calculates the the years you paid at the higher rate. But but that's kind of not really fair to the plan either. So if you do an actuarial valuation of the cost, if you had paid that full amount over your whole service credit. Then what would that cost? And you got to buy that in. Now, that's going to be expensive.
So now the cleanest way, I mean, thi- this is probably provides the employee the most flexibility. Cleanest way from the city's point of view is to say, okay, you got two choices, zero and one or three and one point six, that's your choice. Or something like that. Come up with one of those and say, that's your choice, you can either do A or B. That's the cleanest way from the city's point of view. This is the most flexible way for the employees. I like it because it's a good flexible way, but you have to make sure that the. Policies and procedures are really structured well.
Yeah, well, I came from a plan that had this exact.
Did you? And it worked okay?
It it worked. The actuaries don't like it because there's too much, too many assumptions.
Oh yeah, I know that's, yeah.
But, you know, the employees loved it and they got to choose. They never defined in their plan whether or not you could go back and and buy back, you know, a higher rate. That was never decided, but.
I would say, and we had this discussion with them on Tuesday. If if we go forward in this manner, we need to set a October first, twenty twenty-five selection. And then once new hires, they get to choose and then maybe only give them a choice at once they reach that five year to go back and change. It doesn't change the previous five years unless they re-buy back those. But to not say they can never change, their contribution rate, I think, is a little bit unfair. But I think to say, once you become vested, once you're five years down the road, you may have a different outlook at it.
Yeah.
And you may wanna change that number, but it still means whatever you've contributed those first five years is still at that first factor. Then going forward from five on, you now can have that additional.
I don't know what they would do to your actuarial cost, but I mean, it would be, it would be much higher to to manage that from an actuarial point of view, but that that's a good option, a good.
I just think we don't, instead of giving them a chance to go back and forth or no, you get one chance to start and one chance during the plan to change it.
I've heard that before. You get one change, once you change that, that's it.
You don't change it.
Oh no, yeah, you get the option to change. I've been in that position. You get you get one option, you get one chance to change it. And you have to make sure that that's what you want, so.
That's definitely something that would need to be defined in that plan that is written that would come before you.
And 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 the buyback, the the buyback thing, I think more typically is something that's done on a on a an anniversary window. Not every year, like every five years or whatever. You have an option to ask for it, an amount to buy up, you know. And they're gonna give you how much money you have to give them and you can buy up to do that, but it's not something that's done typically on an annualized basis.
Yeah, well, I know when the actuary calculates those buy-ups, he does it as of that day that it's requested. And it's not a big deal to, you know.
Do it anytime, I guess, okay.
It's not, it's not for him. So so those those are some options that we've thrown out. That that, you know, after we discussed it. Now, we made, and and if you look at the ongoing city cost, the thirteen point seven one percent, that's based on all these assumptions. And it's based on some assumptions of that we put in for what employees may choose. So what employees actually choose is going to affect this rate up or down. If all employees choose zero, this rate will likely go down. If all employees chose to contribute ten with two point eight factor. This rate then would increase.
That might be thirteen point seven one, yeah.
Thirteen point seven, that's your cost for this plan. You know, currently you're budgeted at nine percent. That's that's for all of these employees. To switch to this plan with these assumptions, you would be looking at thirteen point seven one percent. And this box over to the left sort of gives you that in dollars and mileage rate. So if you look, there's the general fund, what it would cost the general fund, what it would cost the other funds and the total cost of the plan. But specifically looking under general fund, the increase that's embold would be the increase over the current nine percent budgeted. So that extra five percent basically, four point seven one percent would cost you around two hundred and seventy-eight thousand with these assumptions.
So our, the the increase in our budget would be two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in the thirteen point seventy-one, which. That thirteen point seventy-one represents what they consider to be an actuarial number based on a a a sampling of the number of employees. And what they, at what percentages they buy in, or is that at zero for everybody or is that at?
No, 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 that's what I was saying is we went through, see, up above this, between these.
Yeah.
Is every employee, their service date, their date of hire, when they were born.
Right.
All of that stuff.
Their last three years of salary.
The only thing we didn't know for sure is what they would choose between zero and ten percent contribution. So we went through and actually just changed some of those contributions. Uh, some of the employees that may be closer to retirement, we put at ten percent because they're probably gonna choose a higher rate, but some of the newer employees, we put at zero. So it's a mix.
So that's based on your random assumptions at this point in time. And once you actually go through the enrollment date, that could change.
It will change.
Yeah, and I think what we could do is if this was a a serious consideration, we could. We could send out a survey to all of our employees and say, if you were given this option and please be realistic about this consideration. What would you consider? And that would give us some a better, I think, and and Brian and I looked at this shit last night or yesterday afternoon. And when we went through it, I think he has a pretty good assumption. Um, based on the, what we would think people would choose. I mean, there were a lot of five percents in there, which, you know, probably a lot of people would choose that. Um, there were a few zeros, a few tens, some sevens, some threes. It was all on the board, but I would say you probably averaged employee contributions. If I'm correct, somewhere around the five percent range, six percent range, on this thirteen point seven one. And I think that may be a little high on employee contributions.
And I wanted to err on the high side then.
And the other thing we did discuss yesterday is that we would give employees the option. Once again, a one-time option, that if you are retiring in less than five years. You can stay with your current nine percent mission square amount, because they would lose out by entering this plan.
And that's actually going to cut this rate down if they choose to do that.
Because you gotta remember, some of those are our highest.
Closest to, they're the most expensive employees.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So it would actually, I think this is a really reasonable.
So for the purpose of our discussion today, if we assume, let's say we decide, let's say we wanna go far with this plan, say that's a reasonable plan. That we need to be prepared to 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 budget for an additional two hundred and eighty thousand dollars against the general fund. Or is it an additional three hundred and, eh, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars against a total fund balance accounts?
Well, those are the other funds.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out.
Two hundred and eighty.
It's made up of. Eighty against the general fund.
Of airport, building, golf and stormwater, those are your other funds.
Yeah, but I mean, but I'm just trying to figure out what, from a budgeting point of view, we're talking about impacting our budget, our total budget by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
General fund by two hundred and eighty, total of all funds, three seventy-eight.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get, which is, which number is the budget increase, three seventy-eight or two eighty?
Three seventy-eight for all funds.
And two eighty only general fund.
But we're budgeting for the the city, so.
Correct.
So if we budget, if we were to, if we were to say, yes, let's do this. What would the, what would this current budget have to increase?
For the whole city.
Three hundred and eighty.
Three seventy-eight.
Three seventy-eight, okay.
You're saying the other funds, do the other funds have that money to to, I mean, we know the building fund has money.
Yeah, so we would, we would make, we'd have to make adjustments in, Stormwater's the only one we'd have to make adjustments in.
Yeah.
And we would have to make adjustments because I'm not gonna continue to allow them to carry over a bigger deficit.
Right.
I know they have the funds, we showed it yesterday.
Right.
So their pro- their amount of this is probably, they're probably the biggest one.
Their 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 payroll is eighty-two oh ninety-eight, so you'd take that number and multiply it by five percent and that's.
So so if if we, if we have to have it in the budget, but we don't have to raise. Well, I'm just gonna use an example. We don't have to raise the millage to cover the entire three hundred because the other funds have the money to cover their portion. The general fund is where we don't have the money to cover.
Correct, the two hundred and eighty.
Correct.
The two hundred and eighty, okay.
I mean, I I understand the 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 total budget increase is three hundred and seventy-eight five.
Yes.
That's a total budget increase.
Yes.
And how you spread that out across the budget is, that's 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 one thing.
Well, we don't have a choice on that though, let me clarify.
Okay, I I understand. I'm I'm not, I'm not questioning, I'm just saying that. But the the, now, when we get to our millage discussion, then we're gonna have to talk about how we can make up two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, correct? That's all I'm, I just wanna know what the total budget impact is, which is that, three seventy-eight, because that impacts every one of those accounts. It impacts all of our.
But only general gets the the millage.
But I'm not talking about millage thing, I'm talking about retirement right now. And retirement is a total budget impact. So we're gonna end up impacting our budget in total by three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which were already nine hundred thousand dollars in the black. So now we go into the black by.
Well, that's the general fund.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna clarify because we're 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 getting, so when we say we're at a deficit of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand. That doesn't take in the other funds, that doesn't take in the deficit of Stormwater, that those funds that are otherwise. So the nine twenty-three would only see the addition of two eighty, not only, but the addition of two eighty, not three eighty.
Alright, so let's 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 make sure we're clear. Total budget. Revenue, expenses, what's the number?
I I can't, we don't have the, we separate the enterprise funds from our total budget.
Okay.
We don't have that number in this book here.
So my question about the retirement stuff is, what's the increase for next year? Assuming your numbers are dead on. And they're not, but assuming their numbers are dead on, what what's our impact next year?
That would be the three eighty.
Possibly.
Yeah, he does have a possibly, but I'm gonna tell you the approach that I wanna take.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me tell them first.
I mean, because remember, we have our portion that we have to match, so.
So I I I'll I'll dig into this area. Currently, this is the police plan. On the front of it, you'll see it says, City of Sebastian Police Retirement, Actuarial Evaluation as of October one, twenty twenty-four. For the contributions applicable to the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So if the valuation is done October one, twenty twenty-four, it is for the contributions a year later that start.
Okay.
So, and and this is all, you know, we discussed with the actuary and and this is standard. The first year of the plan, you do not have to contribute anything. He he doesn't like this option and that's fine, but you need to hear the options, in my opinion. You don't have to contribute anything to the plan because at the plan's one year is when you would start contributing. Because everything is a year behind in plans. And the actuary did say about two-thirds of the plans in Florida are set up this way. The the downside to setting up a plan this way is once you do start contributing, he puts an inherent factor in there. That because you didn't contribute for a year, of of whatever your assumptions are set up at, is six, six and a half percent, I think. Is what he recommended. So he puts that assumption into your liability and would increase your contributions by that six percent, six and a half percent.
So it's like an interest.
Yes. Now, if you do choose to put money into the plan upfront, start contributing immediately. One-time contribution of what I would recommend, one time a year, maybe after property taxes come in or something. Then that number actually goes into an advance contribution. So like your police plan currently has an advanced contribution and it is sitting at. I'm gonna have to dig into the plan to see it, but it's around two hundred thousand, I think, for that advanced contribution. And what an advanced contribution does is it sits there and it it keeps the actuary from having to charge you interest. As if you didn't contribute for the prior year. But it'll keep carrying forward year by year by year unless you decide to use some of it. Or add to it.
Kind of like a savings account.
Okay, so Brian, what do you wanna do?
My concern, and I've shared this with Brian. It's it's okay. I've shared this with him. In in looking to the future. In, in looking to the future, I have a hard time with not funding it day one as we go into this. The simple fact of I don't want to all of a sudden get compounded with higher percentages because it is, it is an actuarial study. It does go actuarial on a yearly basis and it's, my fear is that we would see a, a compounding effect by not contributing in year one. I've been told that's not reality, we're only going to see that six percent or six and a half percent, I think is what it is.
Six and a half.
Um, at, uh, increase there or back charge type situation. Um, I, I just have a little bit of that uneasiness, so the option that we have is one, to try to, you know, to make the attempt to fund it for this full thirteen point seven percent that's shown here. Two, contribute to nine percent, we can do that and have it sit into a pre-plan so that if in future years. That number fluctuates, we can pull from it. However, my only concern is that we're also again going to come at this table next year. And I'm going to show you the same thirteen point seven percent that I need to fund retirement accounts that we didn't bite off this year. So now next year, I'm going to ask you for that same three hundred and eighty thousand dollars again next year. And for me, I, I can't do, if, if you all decide to go that route, I'm completely fine with it. And Brian is a hundred percent correct, we've, we've had these numerous discussions. My concern is, if we don't do it this year, we're going to be back here in the same boat again next year with it. And we can't keep pushing it and, and, and not doing it, it's going to have to happen. So with that being said, I'm perfectly fine with whatever's decided. I just want to be clear on that one though, that there, I have some concerns with how it compounds in future years if we don't go ahead and, and increase our budget by that amount.
Okay, if we funded, if we take the approach that, that you would like to take, which I don't necessarily disagree with at all.
I don't either.
I think that funding retirement plans is a fundamental responsibility of the agent, that's what our, our responsibility is to fund the retirement plan for our. Our employees. Um, that means that we're talking about funding from our reserves. In both cases, whether it's general fund or enterprise fund, doesn't matter to me, because, uh, I'm, I just looked at the chart, would, I'm afraid I did. But we're talking about funding from our reserves, an additional three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, which means either part of that, the two hundred and seventy eight from the general fund reserves. And the remainder amount from the reserves for the enterprise funds, is that not a correct statement?
Well, you have the.
You increase millage.
Correct, it's either your general fund's going to come from general fund reserves, that difference, or it's going to come from a millage rate increase.
Yeah, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm, I personally would never, we're talking about to do that a millage rate incre- to get all that, because that's not built into this chart.
No, it is not.
So we're talking about a millage rate increase that is absolutely unattenable to me. Um, so, um, we're, we're talking about funding this from our reserves and hopefully next year we can figure out a way to get. It funded from the revenue stream as opposed to having to do millage rate increases, but we're talking about funding the entire three hundred and seventy eight thousand initial dollars from our reserves. Whether it's enterprise fund reserves or general fund reserves.
So, a- and let me ask you this question, Brian, on this, because you're going to be the one that can answer this. If we fully fund it this year and take money out of reserves, it's going into the advanced payment.
Correct.
So then next year, when we only have nine percent plugged in again, we can pull that four percent out of our advanced payment to cover the difference.
Correct. If you decide to make payments in this coming year, it will not be standard contributions, it will be advanced contributions. And that's how it'll be listed in your actuarial report is advanced contributions. Now, does it make a difference in how much your future contributions are going to be? Absolutely. The more money you have in that plan, you know, the more you're earning in your investment plan, the less liability is going to be, because he's going to take that liability and calculate it. And then subtract what you've got sitting in there to come up with the current liability, or if you're carrying it forward, he won't subtract that amount. And he'll just say, this is your liability, you can choose to use this, so there's two different ways he can do it. But that, it sounded like the best way would be to carry it forward year to year if you choose to advance fund. But you're going to advance fund in any amount you want also. You don't have to choose that, that amount, you could choose the nine percent, you could choose the fourteen percent, you could choose fifty thousand dollars to cover the admin.
So, but, so let me ask this question, so the employee contributions would go in starting effective, the plan start date of October first, twenty twenty five. So their contribution percentage is going into the plan. So we would also be earning interest to help us in future years based off of that, those contributions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, everything, eh, every dollar that you physically put into the, the Florida trust, it will start earning those investment dollars, so it's going to help you in future years.
And now, in future years. You're going to be budgeting this at some number equivalent to the thirteen point seventy one as opposed to the nine percent. Because when the employees make their, their selections, we'll, we'll assume that your assumptions are right and they get near that thirteen point seventy one number. So in the future years, you'll be budgeting this at the thirteen point seventy one number.
So how that will work is once this plan is put into place, this is the choice, I'm just making an assumption. Put into place this year, we would, around October first of twenty twenty five, get an actuarial report for October first, twenty twenty six through September thirtieth. That's what would be budgeted, because similar to how we do the police department, so the police department, we received in October, the actuary report to start this October. So we know that increase and we budgeted that, that amount is eighteen point eight percent. Okay, that's budgeted, but we would always know in a year in advance of what that number comes out to be for that, so then you're, you're budgeting in the future. That actually went down, I think the previous year it was twenty percent that we paid.
Twenty one point nine.
Twenty one point nine.
But now, that includes state funding, so the actual plan costs more. It, it, the actual plan this coming year is going to be twenty eight point two percent, it's just partially funded with state.
Okay.
So, don't, don't get confused that this plan is close to the police, police plan actually costs twenty eight point two percent, it's just that our funding in the cities is eighteen point eight.
So I just want to clarify that, that we would always have that next year coming around, but if we have this advance and we run into a lean year. We can always dip into that advance to cover our, our budget deficit.
Absolutely.
On, on funding that our portion.
And we wouldn't have to go into reserve to take.
Correct, it, it, but that would require us to put an advance in place this year, whatever that number comes out to be, whatever that advance is.
Right.
We would have to put that advance in there this year.
Yeah, I mean, in future years, you're going to be properly funding it through the reserve, through the actuarial, uh, uh, statement that you receive, hopefully.
Correct.
You're going to be able to properly fund it through that as opposed to have shortfall in your funding on that, so I would hope in future years you'll be able to do that, so. I mean, I'm, I would personally, I don't, I, I, my personal preference is that we go ahead and fund it now. Whether you two guys get together and decide you want to fund it for an additional three hundred and seventy eight thousand or additional hundred and fifty thousand or additional whatever, that's fine. But we, we, there's enough money in the, in the, um, um, the enterprise fund accounts, reserves to handle the, it's portion of this. There's enough money in our reserves to handle our portion of this. Uh, without us raising, without us impacting our millage rate in order to fund this, there's enough money there to do that. In reality, you're putting this money in reserves, but in a retirement plan, I mean, it's not like we're spending it, it's going into a retirement plan.
It's, to throw another kink in, it's actually not going to affect your general fund fund balance. Because it's just literally moving cash from the general fund over to the plan, but the liability still falls on the general fund.
That's what I was saying.
And when you move that cash, it reduces that liability, so your fund balance nets to zero.
Yeah.
You just won't have the cash in there.
It's not like we're spending cash, okay, well, if it's, it's a.
Well, you're not spending fund balance, you're moving cash.
So, I mean, yeah.
So that's got to be done, that's it. It's got to be done.
Yeah.
So either way, I don't know what you guys think, but I would say we take that path.
Okay, so, so what we will do, and I just want to be clear on this, we will proceed back to now with, you know, getting our withdrawal documents from the CWA. We will proceed with our actuarial study, we will do a survey of employees to see what they anticipate a, um, a rate would be. We will then come back and once we, we present the budget to you all in September, we will show, we will not increase the general fund budget. Above what's already in here with the nine percent, and then we will utilize reserves for whatever that additional amount is going to be. And then we will begin funding the account this year.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and do you all have any issues with our employee contribution options or factors? I think it gives a wide range, but it gives them plenty of options to decide which way they want to go.
Yeah.
And we will have multiple meetings with our employees before that, that choice is ever made to explain to them the process.
Yeah, my, my only concern, make sure that in, in the plan document, it's very specifically spelled out, how they can move from one of these contribution levels to the other and, and how.
I don't think we're going to.
That's something we're going to need to.
Yeah.
Get direction on and decide on, do you want them to be able to, to move and then not have to pay back? And then it be calculated on the, the whole percent, or do you want them to have to buy back? If you force them to buy back, it's going to keep many people from moving at all, because it's going to be expensive.
I, I, I think that's an actuarial issue, does the actu- eh, well, what is it from an actuarial point of view that they are, that they handle? The most flexibility, we should give our employees the most flexibility we can within reason, is what I think, do you guys think the same?
And this gives them that, and it gives all of them the opportunity to decide which way they want to go, depending on how much money they have.
I mean, I, eh, eh, some people might say, I'll write you a check for twenty two thousand dollars to buy into that position. And some people might say, no, I don't want to write you a check, what does that mean for me when I retire? Because that's going to be, their question is going to be, what, if I make this move, what's it mean to me when I retire?
And, and to be clear, we will have to set up a pension board, um, we'll have to set that up and do all that, but all these documents are now work. For Brian?
I've already got the documents.
So he's, it's going to be a lot of work over the next two months.
Yeah.
To work between League of Cities, our, uh, attorney, the, the pension attorney that we have, the, um, actuarial, Mr. Stewart. And a lot of work going to that, and you all will see everything and you will see all the parameters before the documents are finalized, you'll have to approve them. So everything is going to come to you all via ordinance, we're going to have to have multiple meetings and everything will be fully disclosed and discussed at that time.
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay.
It's a good deal for our employees, I think.
Oh, yeah, so then, the final thing, um, just wanted to kind of provide this in a better picture of how it affects. Because, you know, the document yesterday was showing our increase and decrease based off of the rollback rate. Or based off of, um, the, um, the, the, the three point one nine five five and the increases there. This shows you actually how it's going to affect, so if we were to go to rollback, we would be in a one point three five billion dollar deficit in the current proposed general fund budget. This year's current millage rate, three point one nine five five, as we've discussed, we would be in a nine hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred and seventy eight dollar deficit. And then as we continue to go down these additional millage rates, you see we start to reduce the deficit, uh, that we're, that we're at.
Yeah, does that include the three hundred thousand dollars for the railroad?
Uh, so, so let me, so on the three hundred thousand dollar railroad, so I, yesterday after the, after our discussions. Um, the two hundred and twenty three thousand for Barber Street is actually being done August third, or August ninth, somewhere around in there, so that's going to fall in this fiscal year. Um, we're currently looking at local option gas tax or an option there that we can pull out of that. If not, we're going to come to you all for reserves because we're going to have to fund that. Um, the ninety thousand is in November, um, so that will, um, we're, we're going to be able to find dollars outside of general fund to cover that ninety thousand.
Okay.
So you're not going to have to cover, cover either one of those in this budget. One may have to be covered by general fund reserves if we're unable to allocate out of, um. Uh, I'm still trying to get an, an opinion on DST if it's eligible, local option gas tax I know is eligible, we don't have funding in local option or that much. So there may be a point that I have to come back to get a certain amount out of reserves. And we do still have, you know, not to, it wouldn't be something that's eligible technically for R and R. Um, but we still, still, still have that two hundred thousand that we had, but had shown in there from last year. Um, and some departments are, you know, things pop up between the next two months, but there is that little bit of cushion there on that two hundred thousand.
And this still doesn't include any salary increases?
It, this does include salary increases on it, yes.
It does, it's already projected in there.
Yep, so you'll see.
Five percent, right.
You'll see, so it's, it's, it's a varying range because you got to remember, we took, uh, uh, the police department has seen, what's in here is basically what, you know, or is. What we discuss, we had discussed at one point. Um, the maintenance workers, their pay increases are in here that show their new positions that Cindy was referencing, um, with those salaries in there. Um, there's already been some changes, this document's already, we're, we're working behind the scenes a little bit to change a few other things. Um, but currently, across the board, the number is six percent.
Okay.
Um, currently.
Um, what, what is the, uh, what is the millage for like a zero?
So when you look at it, you're probably close to the, I mean, I would say realistically, the three point five four five five would get you kind of close. To go over three point five nine five five, it's somewhere in between those two. Um, but at the end of the day, you know. We, we will make work. What you all tell us. Um, and I, I, you know, one of the good things about these budget workshops is you all really, I, I think you all get full two days worth of information from our employ- from our department heads. Um, you get to see all the way down into the line item stuff of everything that we have. Not to say you don't do it on your own, but here in this situation, they're literally going through their entire budget with you, just about. Um, so you see those things and you see how those breakdowns are happening. Um, you know, the one thing, you know, looking at a couple of things, I know we had discussed with Lee, um, hit the heavy equipment mechanic thing, we're going to be looking, I'm going to go back and revisit that one. Um, but you got a really good picture of this. Can we, at this point, can we cut more operating? If we do, you will see it, I'm just going to be clear, i- it will be seen. However, we can do it, um, not saying we can't, I can go back and we can work on that, and we're already going to do that, I can promise you. No matter, I don't know what you're going to decide next Wednesday, but we've already, I started working last, yesterday evening and also this morning on, on places. Eh, you know, to, to, unfortunately, they're little amounts, but they're, every little bit starts to add up. Um, so that's really where we're going to be, is, is where we go next Wednesday. Um, once you all set the trim, we know we're not going above it and we will make it work.
The, the choice that, I, I, I think the choice that we're going to be faced with on Wednesday is, how much of this we want to fund by tax increases and how much do we want to fund out of reserves? It's that simple. And my. You know, I, I, I'm, we'll talk about that later because that's what we're supposed to do, but, um, you know, I, 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 I'm after. Even, even before the two days, when I got a copy of the budget and I started reading through it and marking it, there's not a whole lot of fat in here.
There isn't.
There's no fat, you know, there's no fat.
Actually, I think they cut into the meat some.
I mean, you might, you might save a hu- a hundred here and a thousand there and something like that.
Four hundred here.
Yeah, you're not going to get this budget down by nine hundred thousand dollars, you're not probably going to get it down by seventy eight thousand dollars. Oh, you might, you might be able to reach that, you know, maybe seventy eight thousand dollars, but, so, you know, we, we. I, I think th- these sessions have been really good and make it, but hopefully some people watched them. We've had a couple of people walk in here and last long enough to leave, uh, but, uh, I think, I think hopefully some people watched them and they got a, they got a view. Although spending six hours watching a TV doing something like this is kind of hard to do, but maybe they go back and selectively watch it on YouTube or something, but, um, and get a good view of this. There's no, there's no doubt in my mind that there's just not anything of major significance in this budget that you can go after.
I was going to say, I think we still cut some of the meat off already, so.
Yeah, we did.
I, I can honestly tell you, and, and you've probably heard it from some of the department heads, I cut them more than, than they needed, um, it's already happened.
And I think it goes back to, the people have seen the level of service these past couple of years that the city has done, the work is being done, there's no doubt about it, the improvement. So really, there's nothing to be cut.
Well, eh, and everything is going up all over, it affects us just like individual homeowners and individual, everybody can see that things are affecting them, things are going up. But what's our, um, total general fund reserve balance that we have, seven million?
Seven and a half million.
No, 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 it's eight point five.
We're at eight point five?
We're at eight points, roughly eight point six million.
Eight point six million, yeah.
And, and we, we just spent, we just spent two hundred thousand of that with the, with the retirement thing we talked about.
Correct, but let me, but let me also state, that's restricted, that's the restricted amount, we actually have more than that if you take into account pay, employee payouts. Um, the R and R account and the, the, um, the, uh. Our, our assigned funds, so that equates like one point five million.
Yeah, but we, we're liable for that stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine, yeah, we are, we got to hold that, so, yeah.
To say employee payouts this current fiscal year is going to equal three hundred and eighty nine thousand, there's no way it's going to come close to that.
Yeah, but that's alright.
But we do allocate those just in case it was to happen.
Right, but we still have eight point six mil anyway, right?
Yes, and we have to maintain seven.
Right, seven is what we agreed to before show, oh, alright.
So, I, I mean, that's just, that's just the issues, where, where, where we want to go in between that.
It's that Wednesday.
Yeah.
And I just remember some of the discussions when we did the trash stuff, you know, I mean, people say, well, gosh, you added ten dollars a year to my thing and it's bankrupting me. And there are people out there, their ten dollars a year will hurt them. But we, we have to look at our overall demographic in the city, we have a very large proportion of our population that are older, retired and, and don't have a lot of. But we, with looking at our overall demographic in the city, we have a very large proportion of our population that are older, retired and, and don't have a lot of, a lot of cash flow, so.
Every, every change we make affects us, it's not like, oh, hey, we're just giving your money away, listen, it's our money too, we don't want to pay more taxes.
Yeah.
Last thing we want to do is pay more taxes.
The more taxes you pay, that means the more money you make.
It does?
Think about it.
Oh, you're rich, dude.
When people, when people say, don't raise my income tax, wait a minute, if you pay more income tax, that means you make more money.
Means you may be having.
So we, we will go back, Brian and I will work, uh, this afternoon, tomorrow morning, getting everything finalized for our presentation on what we're gonna recommend. Um, and then we will go from there, our recommendation's probably going to, um, include some things that aren't one time, that are one-time expenditures. Possibly coming out of reserves, I do really caution using reserves to make up things that are reoccurring expenses.
Yeah.
Because then it just sets you up in the future. Um, for those things, so we can look at some of the one-time things, um, and looking at that, so we may make some recommendations with that. But, uh, we'll, we'll obviously have that ready tomorrow at some point, you'll get your packets, uh, Budget Advisory Committee will get their stuff, their information tomorrow as well. Um, and we'll have that Budget Advisory Meeting on Monday, Parks and Rec on Tuesday, and then back to you all on Wednesday. So, any final questions, comments?
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you all, we appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.